Good evening. Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. If you would just take a moment and silence your cell phones. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, as a preliminary matter, let me just say that our add-on item for this evening, a resolution regarding climate emergency, which was the new Item B under New Business, will be not heard tonight. It will be delayed. I want to thank our Sustainability Committee, SACE, for their meeting last night to consider a resolution around declaring a climate emergency. And I also want to thank the Sunrise group that met with several of us today to discuss this issue at length. And after lots of conversation, we decided we needed a little bit of more conversation to allow some time and room for the two groups to come to an agreement around the wording of a final resolution. So we're hopeful that it will happen by one of our meeting dates in January. And I want to thank those folks already for the work they've already done and the work that they'll be doing ahead of them in order to find this common ground. And if anyone else has anything to add to that, that's just my announcement in case anyone was here on that item. Okay. Tonight, we have no proclamations. We have a consent agenda, and I will entertain any questions, comments, or a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alex, I see you're just getting here, and we just made a brief announcement about moving the resolution to January. Thank you. Okay. All right. We have, under Presentations and Reports, Item A, Financial Audit Presentation. This is where Gwen gets really excited.
I love this part.
CPAs, okay.
Hi, I'm Barbara Whitehorn, Chief Financial Officer, and this is Becky King, our City Controller. She does the financial year-end and works with the auditors every year, so I wanted to give her the opportunity to meet you and to introduce the auditors.
Hi. Like she said, I'm Becky King, Controller for the city, and I would like to introduce our external auditors from RSM, Mark Snyder and Robbie Bitner. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Mark Snyder, and this is Robbie Bitner, partner with RSM US. Robbie Bitner's a senior manager. So we thought we'd go through a quick presentation for you. You'll start it. Okay. We're going to discuss the financial results for the year ended June 30, 2019. Your CAFR has basically these areas as a management discussion analysis, the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, notes, required supplemental financial information, other supplemental information, statistical data, and compliance. You can have one of four types of opinion you can get from a public accounting firm. You can get an adverse opinion, which says your financial statements don't present fairly. You can get a disclaimer, which says the auditors were unable to perform the audit. You can get a qualified that says there was issues, or you can get the best, which is an unmodified or what we call a clean opinion. City of Asheville has got an unmodified, clean opinion.
Round of applause. I just kidding.
Good. A little bit of a comparison for your tax rate versus similar-sized cities in North Carolina. You can see you're a little bit below per similar-sized statewide, you're just a little bit above. Tax collections, similar size, you can see the city is very good on their tax collections, very high percent, and much better than the state. Your general fund, you have $83 million of fund balance. The key thing here to take note, 23 million of it's unassigned, very strong. Okay. So now, we're going to go over the compliance findings. I'm going to turn it over to Robbie.
So just to capture that moment, our savings account is in good shape, is sort of how I phrase that. Is that okay?
I was saying you're very strong.
Thank you, Mark. So in addition to our opinion on the financial statements as a whole, we are also required, under government auditing standards, to issue a report on compliance and internal controls over financial reporting. We also issue a report on the fair presentation of the scheduled expenditures of federal awards and state awards in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. And with those reports, we also issue, we also would identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control that are noted during the course of our audit. So this year, during, under the Uniform Guidance, we tested three major programs, the Community Development Block Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the National Infrastructure Investments, also known as the Tiger Grant. Those were our three major federal programs tested. From a state perspective, in addition to some of the matching pieces of those grants from a federal side, we also tested the state, non-state system, Street Assistance Program, which is better known as PAL bill. So just a quick, I'm not really going to go over the deficiencies too much, and the main reason for that is that we didn't have any this year. So in the past, last year, we did have a couple of deficiencies. Those have been fully remediated at this point, and we did not have any to report in the current year. So that's a testament to Barbara, Becky, and their team, you know, really bettering their system.
Great.
And it makes our life easier as auditors as well when we go through and we don't have those kind of things to deal with. So, thank you. So the last part of our presentation here, well, and I didn't state this previously, but in accordance with those standards, our report on internal control and compliance, we did not note any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or any material noncompliance with laws, grants, or contracts. We also didn't note any fraud, waste, or abuse. And our opinions over the fair statement of the scheduled federal expenditures of federal and state awards was an unmodified opinion, and we did not note any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over your federal and state programs. So the final piece of our presentation is what's called the AUC 260, formerly known as the SAS 114 letter. This letter is a required communication item to those charged with governance by external auditors. These sort of, these standards arose from the INRONs and WorldComs of the world back in the early 2000s whereby if those charged with governance had been aware of some of the happenings within, then there's likely that the audit failures would not have occurred. So I'm just going to hit a few high items on here. There were four new accounting standards implemented this year, only one of which you might actually see something in the financial statements related to that. Otherwise, there was no material effect from those implementations. Additionally, we did not, we had a couple of audited adjustments and a couple of uncorrected misstatements, none of which we deem to be material or were posed to, or were the result of anything we would note as a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And lastly, we did not have any disagreements with management. And on behalf of myself, RSM, Mr. Snyder standing here, we'd like to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to continue to serve the City of Asheville. It is a pleasure to come up here to the mountains, and we certainly do appreciate it. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Barbara, if you've got an open seat near you, maybe raise your hand so folks filing in will be able to see. I think there's a few up here as well. Just take a moment here. I'm not seeing Barbara, but I assume that concludes this item. Probably since she left. She does.
There she is.
Oh, there she is. She's in the back. Okay. Anyone else looking to try to get a seat? If you, we've got some seats up here now, the second row. Okay, I'm going to re-announce our earlier announcement since we have so many new guests in the council chamber. We're up to the portion of the agenda, we're on the second item under Presentations and Reports, and we're going to hear the council managers' update. But before we do that, let me please just re-announce that for the item of new business that was added today, Item B, a resolution regarding climate emergency, that item will not be heard today. We again want to thank the members of our Sustainability Committee, SACE, for meeting last night and recommending a resolution, and also all the members of Sunrise who were able to meet with me and Councilman Young and Councilman Mayfield earlier today to talk about how to work through a process where we can find agreement around the wording of a resolution. There was shared consensus around this issue being a climate emergency, but where we're still needing a little work is working out the wording of the resolution. In order to give that effort more opportunity, we're going to, at the request of Sunrise, delay consideration of this item until January. We have two meetings in January. We were not saying which one yet, which one we'll be able to hear this on because we're not, it takes a lot of people to come together and reach a resolution about the resolution. So it would be aspirational to hope that we could get there on the 14th, but since SACE's regular monthly meeting isn't until the 15th, it may not be until the 28th that we're able to consider a final agreed-upon resolution. So again, I really want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this issue, and especially the members of Sunrise who have been engaging now with the city and have dedicated so much time and effort to this cause. And I see a lot of people here who look like they're probably here in support of this effort, and I want to thank you on behalf of all the council as well for being here and for caring so much about this important issue. So again, this will not be heard today. Expect it back in January. And again, thanks in advance now for the continued work that it will take to get it back here. Okay. With that said, we're actually going to hear an interesting report tonight about the city's environmental work, and I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Deborah Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
I see that the kids that were visiting here today have all messed up your name, but anyway.
Uh-oh. Okay. As long as I'm not brought at the city attorney, I'm good.
Right.
Okay. So as you said, Mayor, I'm going to ask Amber Weaver to come up and talk about our sustainability initiatives, but before she does, I want to just make a couple of opening comments. At your retreat and as part of your budget process, this year, you identified 13 strategic initiatives that you wanted staff to focus on. And in fact, you also put those strategic initiatives in terms of a timeframe, like short-term, one to three years, medium-term, longer than that, long-term, much longer. What I hope to do over the next several council meetings is to provide you all with an update on those initiatives. I'd originally wanted to do all 13, but I thought that would be kind of information overload and would not really give the time and, I think, attention that the work of staff and the community has around these issues and these priorities. And so we're going to start with sustainability because that is one of your priorities, and I'm going to ask Amber to come up. Again, over the next several meetings, we'll be updating you on the other priorities. So Amber?
Yay. Okay. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for providing time for us to give you an update on the Office of Sustainability. To Deborah Campbell, City Manager, thank you for allowing us to take the time tonight and go over, really, a snapshot of what it is that we do year-to-year. Wanted to provide an overview of the Office of Sustainability for our community members and for council.
Can I pause you for a sec? Can everybody hear? I feel like this is not, for some reason, is not.
Bend it up a little bit.
Is that it?
Yes. Better?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But yes, just a quick history of the city's commitment to sustainability. Asheville has a history of being responsive to advocates and community members on sustainability initiatives, beginning with the creation of the Office of Sustainability nearly a decade ago. We are also the first city in the southeast to create a climate resilience assessment, and we are one of only three communities in the southeast with equity-related staff. I think these are really important things to be thinking about. And in addition to that, we continue to follow policies, ask the mayor for letters of support when we're talking about state, federal, national, and global carbon mitigation and climate commitments. I think that that is something that we should not forget, and to give thanks to our leaders for doing the, supporting the office. And also to have a very good understanding that we also partner with our local nonprofits. And that's something that's also very important. We're uplifting our nonprofits while they're helping us do the work that is sustainable. I just want to reflect on Asheville's commitment to sustainability. And I'm not going to go over each individual resolution. I've picked a few of them out that we'll be going over, and we'll be able to ask questions at that point in time, but, you know, just to begin this presentation, just kind of take this in. This is really impressive, and it's really important.
The first two numbers of each resolution is the year in which it was adopted?
That's correct. So let's get down into some of the work that the office does. I'd like to highlight some of the major resolutions in which we are accountable to and with goals and dates. First, our carbon reduction goal. We have a 4% annual reduction goal to meet 80% carbon mitigation based on 2008 emissions. The way I've set the slides up is that there are key accomplishments on here, and I'm going to kind of talk you through some of the things that are happening right now. If I fit, if I had put any more words on this presentation, we'd gotten my hand slapped. So I want you to be able to hear what it is I'm saying as well about how we're moving forward. We're focusing on carbon mitigation this year around, excuse me, employee commute, which is a large section of our energy use. We're partnering with capital projects on deferred maintenance needs, which is huge, as you all know. Deferred maintenance ranks top for us when it comes to carbon mitigation and the ability to be more energy efficient. We're also exploring options for the Water Resources Department on energy efficiency projects that have been identified through the help of Land of Skies Energy Assessment that was done last year. Renewable energy. We adopt, this city council adopted a renewable energy goal last year for city operations to be renewable by 2030 and to support Buncombe County's community-wide goal by 2042. There's a lot of fun things that are happening in here. We're working to partner with organizations like Asheville City Schools, AB Tech, Buncombe County, and Buncombe County Schools, conducted site assessments on 60 sites, 10 of which are within the city limits of Asheville. Current total estimates for carbon reduction emissions are just about 1,500 metric tons, and that will be annual. So a big win, but we're just getting started. Here's my favorite slide. Climate resiliency. As I had mentioned, we were the first city in the southeast to have a climate resilience assessment. I want us to appreciate the assessment being a part of the comprehensive plan living Asheville, which sets us, it's a guiding tool for us as we think about how we would like to plan for our future. We have this excellent document by the National Environmental Modeling and Analysis Center that helps us determine next best steps in how we should invest, and those investments will create community capacity. I'm also happy to say that we were able to create a resource guide. That resource guide is an everyday guide for commercial properties, industrial properties, residential properties. That allows all of us to participate because, as you know, all of us have to be working on climate together. Really proud to be able to be trained and have training through the GERS Racial Equity Toolkit. Myself and our Energy Program Coordinator, Bridgette, continue to receive training from our internal staff, as well as external training at a national level with the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. Okay, this might be my favorite slide, too. All right. This is, this is pretty cool. I know we all have very strong feelings about partnerships and who those partners are. And I think this is a good opportunity to understand that we all have a role that we have to play when it comes to our climate goals and our renewable energy goals, and that we cannot do this alone. It has to be everyone on deck. And I am actually going to highlight some of the accomplishments from the Energy Innovation Task Force, who were presently working to create something that's sustainable to help us with our community, got community-wide carbon goals. Eliminated the need for 190 megawatt peaker unit. It's pretty amazing. Asheville's a town of 90,000. Way to go. Creation of the Blue Horizons Project, which has helped enroll over 600 homes in Duke's Energy Wise Energy Conservation Program, and weatherization of over 400 low-income homes. Weatherization's important. When we're talking about what does this mean to individuals, individuals in their home, this is it. What I also would like to highlight, and thank you for allowing me to do the work, is participation in the Environmental Defense Fund Cities Initiative, where staff is working across the state with multiple jurisdictions to be addressing what we need from our utility and what we need from our state. The NCE Local Government and Duke Energy Climate Collaborative, AKA Julie E-Lab, it's a new name, is the work of Charlotte, Cary, Raleigh, Asheville, working together on their 100% renewable energy goal with the utility, making sure that the utility is coming our way, little by little. They do have a net-zero carbon goal that was created, so we're working side by side. They're providing us some programs to be exploring and looking at, and we're kind of providing them feedback on, is it helpful? Is it accessible to a smaller city? What could be tweaked in the future to get us to help meet all of our goals? And Governor Cooper's Executive Order 80 has been a great opportunity to address climate change. Our Energy Program Coordinator sat on a subcommittee around energy efficiency. I participated in the Subcommittee on Urban Lands for Trees. Food policy, an oldie but a goodie. Over the years, we have had our Food Policy Action Plan, and this is from our 2017 update. And what's happening now is to explore strategies for incorporating food education and edibles into city department processes and policies such as the UDO, creation and maintenance plans for three additional sites that have edibles on them, and edible orchards, additional food preservation workshops and community meetings, and a focus around food emergencies identified in the climate resilience assessment. So really trying to weave the work of these resolutions that you saw in Slide 2 together to infuse sustainability across the organization. Waste reduction. So this one's been a little more difficult, and there's a lot of work to do, a lot of room for improvement. We did have the mayor, thank you, Mayor, at the 2019 Food Waste Summit, and we continue to receive grants from NCDUQ. But we need a solid waste management plan. We need an ordinance rewrite. We need a waste reduction specialist. And I think we have some really great plans in the past when Whistler was able to participate in some of the pay-as-you-throw discussions. I know all of you have heard me talk about curbside composting, residential curbside composting, and what we could do to reduce waste, but these are some of the things that have not been funded over the last couple of years. But I'm hoping, you know, in time, we'll be able to weave that all together as well.
Could you, though, mention, and I appreciate the highlight on what we still need to do, that since we've implemented our Big Blue Unsorted Recycling Program, my understanding is the weight, the amount of waste the city is putting into the landfill has reduced by household?
Yes, it has reduced, and I think there are concerns about it also increasing based on infill and just population.
Because there's more households.
That's right.
So even if each household brings it down, it's...
Yeah.
Amber, can I, oh, gosh, I really shouldn't talk. Sorry.
You heard me.
But I do want to highlight here that even, this is, as far, I think as I know, this is the goal that we were sort of lagging behind on the most.
That's right.
And I just want to plant this seed for all of us, that next year, when our recycling contract is up, this is going to get a lot harder.
It is.
Recycling around the country, you may know, is just, because China doesn't take all our stuff anymore, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I don't know. It's going to require communities to really rethink their...
Retool, absolutely.
Yeah, and this is going to be a big issue for us.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah.
It's a commitment that we made, and we have some work to do. But I also want to provide you, City Council, some kudos. We're doing some really great work, and I think that we forget about that sometimes. And I know it feels great when Brian Haynes says that we're doing good work, and I appreciate that. And so I want to leave you with some data from the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network. Based on the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network's data analysis of their member network, who are leaders in the field, about 35% are tracking greenhouse gas emissions for city and county operations and have reduced, have reduction targets. Asheville is one of these communities. 30% have adopted... Thirty percent have adopted a plan that includes comprehensive policy changes focused on sustainability and greenhouse gas reduction. Asheville is one of those. Twenty-eight percent are engaging with local utilities to try to change the delivery of renewable energy and energy efficiency options. Asheville is one of those. Only twelve percent have created a plan to reach one hundred percent renewable energy for community and government operations, and only fourteen percent are in the process of doing so. Asheville is further along than most of the members from the network. And I think that that is something that we should be really proud of. I know I am as an environmentalist.
And Mayor, if I just could add, I hope that no one feels as though this presentation is a pat on the back, it's kudos, and there's not a whole lot more to do. We know we've got a lot more to do, but it's also important for us to, at some point, talk about the things that we are doing. Yes, we know we need to do more, and, and we will. So I hope that you all will receive this information in the spirit that it is given, which is, again, just information on how we're doing, and we know that we have challenges, and we tend, we, we expect through the next several months, as we go through our discussion around the budget, discussion around, at, at the retreat, and trying to balance all of these, you know, I used to say competing interests, but I think they're complementary interests. It's just a matter of how we're going to prioritize and devote the resources that are necessary to look at our community holistically and address the, the number of needs that we, we have. So, thank you, and that is our report for this evening.
I just want to add, so, thank you so much for that, Amber, appreciate it, but also just to, you, you talked about a lot of things that the Sustainability Department is focusing on solely. There's all, I mean, just to underline the fact that sustainability, you know, we continue to work on having that as a core value within the system, and, you know, like, right now, we're working on a tree ordinance. Part of our Luigi grant that we just amended is based on, you know, people get more tax incentives, the more energy efficient they are. So, not just things that, you know, your influence and the influence of the city manager, et cetera, you know, this is throughout the...
Organization, absolutely.
Working out throughout the organization, and so...
Well, I think another way to highlight that is to look at these accomplishments and know that that cannot be done with an office. It has to, everyone is coming to the table and participating. This last bullet's pretty exciting, the all-electric lead certified fire station. It's pretty awesome. This couldn't have been done without Capitol Projects. They, they're great team members, and when we talk about our waste reduction goal, we're still getting stuff done. That's thanks to Jess Foster in the Sanitation Division and the leadership of, of the Public Works Director. But yes, all throughout this is partnerships with all of our departments. Couldn't be done without it.
Speaking about partnerships, I know that there are a lot of people in our audience today, and they were here, ready to hear some of the excitement behind the partnership that you have with Sunrise, that we have with Sunrise Movement. Are there any celebrations while we're celebrating? Are there any celebrations that you would like to preview, since we're all here and talking sustainability?
Sure. Well, I, we don't have, when, when I say supporting our non-partners through partnerships, there is usually a, a budget attached to that and a work plan. And I think that that is something that we will continue to do. It's something that, as practitioners, we're continuing to explore when we're thinking about these really large, community-wide goals, and who, who can we partner with in the community? Who can we hire to, to do some of these projects? The work of the Sunrise Movement has mainly been, at this point in time, between the elected officials and the Sustainability Advisory Committee. As staff, I, I do not make, I let the policy happen.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Esther, I have one question.
For Deborah. Deborah, I know you had originally planned to do more, cover more topics tonight. One of them, I think, that you had hoped to cover was transit. Do you, and one of the things that you said in October you would tell us is sort of numbers on, do you, do you have that, or if you don't have it tonight, can you send it around?
We can send it, we can send it around. I also wanted to discuss it as part of your workshop around the budget, which is January the fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
Great. So we have, before our next council meeting on January fourteenth, we have a budget work session. Are we going to try to break last year's record in terms of the number of budget work sessions? Hopefully not, but we will have our first, that, that, I believe it's at three o'clock before the council meeting.
That's correct.
Here in this cha, in this chamber.
Just a question, are we not, is the manager not giving it more detail? You're not doing the six-month update?
Not for all of them, not for all the strategic initiatives.
Okay, so that concludes this portion of the agenda.
Can you say something about the parking lot? Remember that we talked about the parking lot? The employee parking lot?
Yes, the employee parking lot and access to the public, that we are going to open up access earlier, around four-thirty, and parking will be free. And, and I apologize for not remembering to do that.
This is the parking lot on the side of the City Hall?
Yes.
So on the night of council meetings?
On the night of council meetings. It will be open at four-thirty.
More affordable for people who come here.
I see one thumbs up, okay.
And thank, thank you, I forgot about that, appreciate it.
Okay, we have, under our Public Hearings Agenda, the first item, Item A. This time, we need a, a motion to defer consideration, which is different than a motion to continue to adate certain. This is actually a motion to defer consideration of this, this is the redevelopment of the Sears Building at the Asheville Mall.
So Mayor, I'll make that motion. I move pursuant to Rule nineteen F of the Asheville City Council Rules of Procedure to defer consideration of the motion considering the conditional zoning request for one South Tunnel Road from Regional Business District to mixed-use expansion conditional zone for period of up to one hundred days or until such time as a motion to revive consideration is adopted, whichever is earlier.
Second.
All right, that is a motion to defer consideration. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to defer consideration? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, we have a two-parter public hearing, both of which I have to be recused from. So if I have first a motion to recuse me from Items B one and two under the Public Hearings Agenda.
I have a motion to recu, recuse the Mayor from B one and two from the Public Hearings Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Somebody come get me.
Okay. Okay, so we will hear from Paul D'Angelo on this.
Hi, good evening, City Council, City Management. Thanks for having me tonight. Paul D'Angelo with the Community Development Division, here to talk about the application by Tribute Companies for Land Use Incentive Grant, Luigi, in support of affordable housing of a mixed-use, mixed-income development in Ashland-Cox Avenues. Everyone should have a copy of the staff report. In review, the development consists of forty-eight rental apartments with ten percent, or forty-nine of those units of those homes, proposed for eighty percent area median income, AMI, for twenty years. The project, as presented to staff, meets the following eligibility requirements. The proposed development consists of two or more dwelling units for rent. At least ten percent of the, of the units will meet the affordability standards set by the City of Asheville for households earning eighty percent or less of area median income. The affordable units will be affordable to and leased to income-eligible households for twenty years. The proposed development is located inside the city limits. The proposed development is located to provide residents convenient access to jobs, schools, and services. Lastly, the proposed development must be seventy percent residential in use based on square footage, not to include the parking structure to be applicable. Per the Luigi Matrix, the total scoring is eighty points, which would equal sixteen years of property tax grant for the project. The proposal offers affordable rental housing, again, forty-nine units affordable to households at eighty percent area median income for twenty years. Also offers rental assistance. Twenty percent of the final number of affordable housing units will accept housing choice vouchers, rental assistance in the community. Currently, that would be ten vouchers. The proposal also offers excellent location for the community in the South Slope area. Council goals: quality affordable housing and an equitable, diverse community. Staff recommends approval of this Luigi application with a cap of eighty thousand dollars per affordable grant. Some pros of this project, again, provides forty-nine affordable rental housing units to households earning eighty percent or less of area median income. The project has an affordability period of twenty years along with the policy. The proposed project addresses the pressing need for affordable one-bedroom apartments. The project also shows significant economic impact to the community, with construction wages and material purchases will positively affect the local and regional economy. Forty-nine affordable units will be located in the Central Business District with a walkability score of eighty-one, which is very walkable, providing options for our downtown community workers who fall within the eighty percent of the area median income. Regarding fiscal impact, impact for Scenario Two, for a grant with a tax value capped at eighty thousand per unit, at that cap for twenty years and forty-nine affordable units at eighty percent AMI, the city will grant back a total of three-point-nine million dollars over sixteen years of a land use incentive grant, or approximately two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars per year for years one through sixteen. In years seventeen through twenty, the affordability period, as it continues, the city will receive approximately three-hundred-and-eighty-six annually in city tax revenue, or over four years of a one-point-five million dollars in property taxes. Please note, the city will still receive property taxes, and this is a change in your staff report, with a calculation, please note, the city will still receive property taxes of approximately one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand and ten dollars based on that two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar cap. Suggested motion would be to approve the land use incentive grant to the Tribute Companies for the Ashland-Cox Development for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for affordable unit. If I can make a couple other notes regarding this proposal, while we know that development of affordable housing is hard and complicated, and often comes with difficult fiscal decisions as well, I'd like to point out a few other notes on the project. This is a developer coming to the table in partnership with the City of Asheville to be part of the eighty percent area median income solution that is needed yet often overlooked in traditional affordable housing financing, as well as standard bank financing. This is a developer also accepting housing choice vouchers to help with the movement of vouchers that are often stalled on our city streets where an individual or family struggles to find a landlord willing to accept rental assistance. The acceptance of vouchers can help remove the unfortunate perception and stigma around rental assistance. And lastly, with this project, this is our goal in community development, there's an opportunity for forty-nine individuals and families to better align their housing costs with their overall income, allowing additional monies to go towards life, other necessities, as well as better balancing of the family budget. And with that, I can take questions or turn it over to the developer for the second part of this presentation.
Any questions for Paul? And this is, let's just focus, this is on the Luigi grant.
And Paul, we had, we had a finance committee and HR committee earlier today.
Correct.
In terms of what was recommended at that point to full council, it was, was to approve the land use incentive grant for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand. As part of that, too, there was a, there was a direction to staff to review a, a possible policy change that would impact the, in particular, there's, there's some differences with this project that I think we'll hear about in, in a little bit, but would also impact and allow for a, either an escalator or de-escalator based on an adjusted value of the inflationary value of the property. So, we'll probably hear about that a little bit more, but just for the other members of council who weren't part of that committee.
And I did bring that language with me that was passed from Finance Committee in their, their motion, so I have that, if you want to hear the exact language as it was passed.
Okay. So, any other questions for Paul before we hear from the developer?
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Wyatt Stevens. I represent Tribute Companies, and I'll be very brief. I had a chance to speak with three of you at the HCD meeting two weeks ago today, and then with two others, and Councilwoman Mayfield has heard it twice, so she was here earlier today at Finance. Tribute Companies, very briefly, is a family-owned company. Matt Maynard is here with me tonight. He has an apartment here in Asheville, right across the street from this development, and spends a lot of time here. He's the proud father of a brand-new baby boy of one week old, so hopefully he can stay awake through this presentation, but he didn't want to miss it. He's excited about this project. His father is very excited about this project. In a nutshell, you're going to see, if you haven't already, a wonderful presentation from our designers here in a minute. This is a terrific project. I would just say about the Luigi grant, my client was well-aware of this opportunity and has been in active discussions with the city about this opportunity. This Luigi grant will enable them to have forty-nine affordable units affordable to families making less than eighty percent of the area median income, and they can do that for twenty years. And it's a, it's a remarkable project. It's a, it's a remarkable achievement that could not happen without a partnership with the city. I've expressed already to both HCD and to, to Finance my concerns about the cap of eighty thousand dollars over sixteen years. I'll just reiterate that again, just for the record, and just flag for you that we may need to come back for reconsideration of that cap in the future, but for now, we would ask that you approve the recommendation as submitted. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Questions for...
Thank you.
So we'll open it up for public comment? And again, this is going to be about the, the grant. We will talk about the conditional zoning next. So, do we have anybody from the public who'd like to talk, to give us their comments? Okay, anything else from council members, or questions, comments, or a motion?
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, closing the public hearing, sorry, thank you.
I will, I will move to approve the land use incentive grant to the Tribute Companies for the Ashland-Cox Development for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars per affordable year. And with a, with a, with a direction to staff to, to review possible policy changes as they relate to escalators and de-escalators based on a inflationary, adjusted inflationary amounts.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's passed. All right, so we'll move on to public hearing B two, and that is... Jessica? Sorry, I wasn't sure. So this is about the conditional zoning request for the same property?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the public, other members of council. Stalling, stalling. No, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Maybe someday I'll, via visit them. So thanks, this is the consideration of the conditional zoning for this project site. As you can see on the Exhibit A map, the project site consists of four parcels. They have a combined area of about four-point-four-three acres. There's, it's a large site, there's frontage on Ashland Avenue, Federal Alley, and Cox Avenue, all in the Central Business District. We have, you'll recall, we have height zones for the downtown. The properties along Ashland Avenue are, are within the intermediate height zone, and the properties down along Cox Avenue are within the tallest height zones. The heights that are proposed don't meet those. The heights that are proposed don't meet those maximums, but just to note. Both Cox Avenue and Ashland Avenue are designated as key pedestrian streets. Federal Alley is not. The site is currently surface parking and some smaller one-story, two-story buildings. All of that would be removed with this development. So the proposal is for a mixed-use development that consists of approximately 488 residential units, about 86,000 square feet of office and commercial space, and about 973 structured parking spaces. You can see on the site plan, that's all proposed among five buildings that range in height from seven to, five to seven stories. There's two site plans that are proposed, that are shown in your packet, so I want to explain that. This is the original site plan that was submitted by the applicant and reviewed by the Technical Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Downtown Commission. It shows the five buildings. It shows that the vehicular access is proposed. There's two driveways into the parking deck. The primary driveway is up along Ashland Avenue, and then there's a second driveway off of Federal Alley. So those are the only two vehicular access points in and out of the development. The development also includes two other curb cuts, one on Ashland Avenue over by Building A, and the other is on Cox Avenue by Building D. Those wouldn't be for regular vehicular access, those are for trash and off-street loading. So those are just two additional curb cuts. And I point this out because in the CBD Expansion Zoning District, which is what this project is required to request to be rezoned to conditionally, only one driveway is permitted per development. This is such a large development that it makes sense that they would have additional driveways, but you saw in the conditions that that is something that has to be noted, that there are those four driveway cuts associated with the project, and staff is in support of all of that. There's also a condition that's shown on the site plan. With key pedestrian streets in the CBD, we do not permit by right loading spaces. And this has come up with other projects. The project does propose a loading space, it's shown like, shown as a mimicking an on-street parallel parking space up along Ashland Avenue. And that's integrated into the design that you can see, sort of the plaza design, urban, hardscaped elements that are along Ashland Avenue. Due to the wide, very, very wide right-of-way of Ashland Avenue, that there is not any on-street parking, and that vehicular access to the site is limited. That proposal to have that on-street pull-off loading zone has been evaluated by staff and the bodies before this, and everyone's in support of that as a way to integrate that vehicular drop-off along Ashland Avenue. I just wanted to point that out. So this was, this is the initial site plan showing the driveways and the locations where they have been reviewed. The alternative site plan that you had in your packet is essentially the same with the exception of the driveway location along Ashland Avenue. And so, we, as you saw in the staff report and in the conditions, it was written to show these two scenarios. They've both been evaluated by staff and by the applicant. The first, this was the original one I was on, you can see that the driveway location into the parking deck from Ashland is all the way at the north end of the site. It's offset from Morgan Street across Ashland. The alternative site plan shows aligning that driveway with Morgan across the way. There's been, with a project of this size, we anticipate a lot of traffic impact, and so a lot, there's been significant review by the Transportation Department of the Traffic Impact Study, and a number of the conditions that you see in the B1 conditions list have to do with mitigating the traffic impacts that may be expected from this project. When the staff has been evaluating the original proposal that showed the driveway offset from Morgan Street, the condition that was presented by staff and agreed to by the applicant was written in Number Six and Seven. Number Six talked about if the driveway were to remain in that offset location, that the turning movements in and out of the driveway would be restricted to mitigate any traffic hazard. Additionally, in Condition Number Seven, the details had to do with if the driveway were to remain in that location, that the applicant would install an accessible pedestrian hybrid beacon for pedestrian crossing. There's a transit stop across Ashland Avenue over by Morgan, and so the transportation staff wanted to be very careful in working with the applicant for conditions that they would provide that would make for very safe pedestrian crossing across Ashland. You know, this is, when you're cresting up the hill as you're heading north towards Hilliard, and so the condition, if that driveway would remain in that offset location, would be sure that it's that enhanced pedestrian signal where pedestrians have the opportunity to essentially stop traffic, to make sure that that's utmost safety. In the scenario that shows aligning the driveway with Morgan, in that case, the applicant would then be providing full signalization at that location. So that would be signals to stop vehicles as well as provide that pedestrian, that safe pedestrian crossing. So I just wanted to spend a little extra time, it's not common for us to have these two scenarios submitted in the packet, but this has been a lot of consideration with the Transportation Department and Planning Department staff and the applicant to come up with these two scenarios that they could consider that would be very sure to have pedestrian safety and vehicular safety in mind.
So are you recommending, is one being proposed and one isn't? Are they both being proposed? Is there one that staff is recommending?
The staff's recommendation and staff's perspective has always been in support of aligning the driveways. That provides, when you've got that many cars coming and going from, you know, upwards of 1,000 parking spaces, that has the potential, and I believe that the city traffic engineer is here as well, but that, you've got a lot of vehicles coming and going, there's already a pretty low level of service at the intersection up at Hilliard, and so adding that signalization has better opportunities to make for a better level of service on Ashland, and then also keeps in that pedestrian safety as well. When you have the signals, the driveway offset from Morgan across the way, we don't have the opportunity to then have that, you know, location for a traffic signal. So the staff was always pushing for, recommending for, the driveways to be aligned. We have heard from members of the neighborhood who would prefer to not have the driveways aligned for concerns of that resulting in greater vehicular, yeah, cut-through traffic, or as we say, just city residents using city streets, but it can be an imposition, felt like an imposition to neighborhoods.
Just so we're clear, from the staff's perspective, is the, you guys are recommending this, which is?
No, not this.
Yes, this is the one that's aligned. So we have, so when we've been, like I said, there's been a lot of ongoing meetings and discussions with the applicant. They wanted, they had the original, the original that was not aligned. They've come forward with both, and now they, the applicant as well as staff, are both in agreement that the aligned intersection is the preferable scenario.
That was really, as a result, I mean, if I'm hearing you correctly, a lot of it has to do with safety and level of service, is that right?
Correct, correct.
So right above that, I have a question.
Sure.
So if they align with Morgan Street, it's going to require a traffic signal, correct?
It would. If the driveways, if the driveways are aligned, or the driveway in the street are aligned, it would be a full traffic signal that has pedestrian crossing as well as stopping vehicles. If they're not aligned, it would not stop.
And that's pretty close to the one going, I guess, I don't know, guess from this, from this is, well, what we know is north, but from the, this here is kind of east. There's another traffic signal right there, and with those being so close, my concern is that this area is already strained because we have school-related traffic coming from Asheville Middle School. We have work-related traffic. Those school-related and work-related traffic will definitely be congested during those peak hours, but we also have this project very close to a lot of our healthcare facilities up and down Ashland Avenue, and then also a lot of our social services on the back end here, Cox Avenue. Those are issues that will all impact on-time service for our buses. Ashland is right there, it requires steady traffic in order for our buses to inflow and outflow to service our community, the same thing with Cox. So with us being able to vocalize here that traffic will be an issue, and it's already an issue, based on what I've stated, school-related, work-related, access to healthcare facilities, access to social services on Cox, right now, as of now, I think we need more explanation about traffic mitigation. In order so that this council can live up to our performance goals with our transportation system.
Sure. And so we have the engineers on behalf of the development team, as well as our city staff, who, I've done my best, but I know that they'll be able to probably answer more pointed questions relating to the traffic impact study.
So, would you like to hear from the traffic engineer from the city first?
That would be, that would be great, but I think because this project is so massive, and because we've already, within the project, we've already accommodated for 1,000, almost, 1,000 parking spaces, which is equivalent to 1,000, or at least let's say five, 500 vehicles flowing up and down this major area where our art bus terminal is, I believe I can already bet that it's going to be a disaster. We are, this project is maybe a block away, maybe a block away. I grew up in that area. I can go ahead and say I won't be supporting this, unless we come with some recommendations, but I don't foresee it.
Jessica, sorry, again. To address the neighborhood's concerns about city residents who don't live in that neighborhood using the city streets in that neighborhood, has there been any discussion about putting, whatever we call them these days, speed humps, speed bumps, speed whatevers, on Morgan Street, or any of the, what is that, daily drive, or anything like that?
I think that can be a consideration. And the City Transportation Department has a process for working with neighborhoods to do traffic calming devices. It's something that, you know, they, the city, my, and I'll defer to them, but my understanding is, you know, we don't just come in and put them in the ground, we work with the neighborhoods to make sure that it's something that everybody wants to have going on their street, but we do have a process for that, and that's been, the discussions have begun for that.
Have started with the neighborhood about that.
Not with the, not with the neighborhood, if the project is approved, I think that would be the next step.
What I'm wondering is if the traffic calming is something that the neighborhood wants, at the very least on Morgan Avenue, if not some others.
South Grove.
It would be, right, South Grove, that, you know, I would think that this is an opportunity to make that a condition, since it's the development and the aligning that has the potential to really increase that traffic, that this is an impact that we, that the developer could possibly mitigate. So, but it sounds like we don't, those conversations haven't begun.
They have, right, but that is something that could be conditioned.
Yeah, I guess I would just put the question out there, and maybe next time you get up, Wyatt, you might address, you know, whether the, whether the applicant would be willing to add a condition that says if the neighborhood wants speed pump, speed humps in this area, that, whether they would be willing to pay for that.
Right.
Okay.
And that's something that we've conditioned for other projects in the past, elements related to pedestrian safety, pedestrian connectivity, you know, traffic calming certainly can fit into that as well.
Other questions for Jessica? Would council like to hear from the developer first, or would you like to hear from city traffic?
It's up to the council, good, either way.
Okay. So we'll go ahead, any preference there? We'll go ahead and hear from the developer.
Sure.
Thanks, Jessica.
Madam Vice Mayor, again, I'm Wyatt Stevens, represent Tribute Companies. Let me just address that at one point. I'm not a traffic expert either. We have traffic experts here, both from the city. We had an outside traffic engineer do a study. We have Chris Day here from Simple Design Concepts, and he can speak to that study in anticipation of these questions. He's looked at it very closely, he can give you, you know, number of cars predicted, things of that nature. As to Councilwoman Mayfield's question about traffic calming, absolutely. Tribute would gladly add as a condition to this project that they would fund any traffic calming that is deemed necessary for Morgan Street.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'd like to just turn it over to the design team. They can present this project way better than I can, and then if any other questions arise, I'm happy to address them.
Counsel, good evening. My name is Brian Cook. I am with, an architect with McMillan-Paston Smith, and I have a presentation for you. Is there a way I can?
We don't put it, we don't put it in the laptop, it should have been presented earlier.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Can we switch back to the previous?
All right. So, again, my name is Brian Cook, I'm an architect with McMillan-Paston Smith, and I'll walk you through this, the site. Again, it's about four and a half acres. There's an approximate 85-foot drop from Ashland down to Cox Avenue, so challenge, a site with a lot of challenges, but has a lot of opportunities. Starting, starting on Cox Avenue, in the bottom left of the, of the site, we have the first building, which is made up of 243 units. Because of the size and scale of this building, we did break it up into three pods, and these pods then are connected by exterior walkways, so really opens up, opens up the space, and allows connection through it. On Cox Avenue, this is a seven-story building. The first floor at, at the street level is all commercial retail space. The space, the retail space does turn into the courtyard area that we have into this building, within building, within the space. One of the key pieces in this, in this proposed development was to make a connection between Ashland and Cox Avenue. Current zoning for our Central Business District site would allow a building to basically expand from, from property line to property line. And so, with this, we chose to take, take the massing of the buildings and really break them apart, and create these really interactive spaces within the building, pocket gardens, pathways, and a, primarily a connection pathway through, from Cox Avenue up to Ashland, by a series of steps. Once you get into the center of the space, there's a large, open courtyard area. Once we get to Ashland Avenue, the first building, Building A, is a seven-story building. The first two floors are dedicated for commercial and office. Top two floors are a hundred units apartments. The building to the north on Ashland is made up of, what do we call it, two bits of, it's Building A and Building, I'm sorry, it's Building B South, Building B North. Building B South, which is this one here, is made up, is also seven stories. First two levels are commercial office space. The upper five stories are made up of eighty apartment units. And then the building B North is all office. It's about thirty thousand square feet, four stories. Coming down the hill onto Federal Alley, we have a series of five-story, five-story apartment building that's mostly studio-type apartments with a live, potential live-work on the ground floor. This is, there are sixty-five units at this location. And then tucked within all of this is the parking deck, so it's in the hillside, it's flanked by all the buildings. It's, it's not, it's not gonna be as visible from any of the, any of the streets, so it's well-hidden. I'm gonna let Matt come in and talk a little bit about some of the site conditions.
Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Matt Sbrus, I'm the landscape architect for the project with SiteWork Studios, and as you can probably imagine, we had a very dynamic presentation, if you saw the P&amp;Z presentation, it was a fly-through 3D model, it really kind of carried you through the site. And one of the things that's really, really special about this project is, it is four and a half acres, but in the four and a half acres, we take the space that, in most cases, you would cram all the buildings corner to corner, but we've broken them apart, and we pull these buildings apart so that, I'm gonna go back to the site plan, we pull these buildings apart so that there are spaces for air and light and plantings in the middle of this development. And this is the amenity space for the people that live there, for the people that visit there, for the people that are coming down into the Cox Avenue area where there's commercial space, into the office space up here on Ashland, and the streetscapes, we're bringing three streetscapes back to life in Asheville. We've got Ashland, which right now is kind of anywhere USA, it's just a sidewalk and a four-lane road, and we're trying to create new people spaces there. Federal Alley, which right now is really kind of functioning as an alley, we're gonna bring that back into the fold too, as a streetscape and a people's space. And then we've got Cox Avenue, which we're at the, really the bottom of the south slope, and as we've worked our way as a city down the south slope, this is kind of the next iteration of Cox Avenue, and we're stepping the building back, we're adding twelve-foot sidewalks, street trees, really kind of bringing it back into the fold of Asheville streetscapes, and also really kind of reflecting the Asheville downtown standards that we've all been going for in our CBD. So, really, three new vibrant streetscapes, a very dynamic internal courtyard, that one of the challenges that Brian mentioned, we've got eighty-five feet to overcome from Cox Avenue up to Ashland, and the way that we're doing that is a series of courtyards and steps, stormwater features, that we're trying to do some innovative stormwater features within this, and then an overall urban forest concept. We're, we're aware that there are some trees on the site, a lot of this is parking lot, a lot of it, if you go down Cox Avenue, you see it's an old parking lot. And so what we're trying to do is bring back into the fold an urban canopy, we're gonna be focusing on natives, native trees, native shrubs, pollinators, there are thirty-seven trees required on this project, thirty-seven. Those are mostly your streetscapes. We're gonna be adding about a hundred and forty-five more within the interior of this courtyard, and so really trying to bring back the urban canopy into this courtyard space, and over time, it will grow, it'll sequester more carbon, it'll create some really beautiful shaded people spaces for this project. Stormwater, I mentioned a little bit, but we're very aware of the stormwater issues that are happening on the south slope, so there's some engineered solutions, we'll have up-fitted, upgraded stormwater within the project, we're gonna be using some innovative work, like I said, with rain gardens, fire retention, some things that we can interpret and explain to people better ways to do it, and all of that's happening inside this courtyard. And then there's also some invasive plant, pest plant removal that's happening, there's a bank here that has all the worst characters, there's kudzu, privet, English ivy, you know, that's another thing that we want to educate people about, is not every plant is a good plant. Some of these things are getting into our systems, they're eating up our native forests, and this is something that we're really, really looking forward to kind of getting out of there. Other than that, the overall development, and Brian mentioned this, it is large, but this is a project that if you're on Cox Avenue, if you're on Ashland, you will never see this whole project at one time. You're gonna see glimpses of this building, of this complex of buildings, as you walk down Cox Avenue, you're gonna see pieces of the residential project, of the windows and the balconies, and activity, I think that was my buzzer, but trying to breathe some new life into this four and a half acres that right now, over half of its parking lot. Thank you.
Any questions for?
If you may, I just have a couple more minutes to address that traffic question.
Thank you.
I think it's a legitimate question. Chris Day here from Civil Design Concepts.
Yes, Chris Day, Civil Design Concepts, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you. Just wanted to touch really quick, as Jessica made reference, the aligned drive was the original desire of staff. In all reality, we had kind of pushed to avoid it, it maximized our building area to put the drive as far to the north, and we went through the whole process with it like that, with kind of having conversations about the restricted access, continued conversations, and really what kind of pushed us to where we're here tonight, and asking for the alignment, was really conversations we had with transportation staff, the fact that Asheville has consistently been at the top of the list for North Carolina in regards to pedestrian and vehicle conflicts and accidents, and the fact that this project has the opportunity to improve that situation. We went back and we looked at the numbers, the, we analyzed that intersection with Morgan Street. We found that, as I think people who are accustomed to driving that area realize, as you drive north and you get to Hilliard, that intersection, it's currently an F, it backs up coming down Hilliard, and there are a number of folks who decide to try and make a left, go into Morgan, find their way over to South French Broad to avoid that light. The numbers, when we analyzed the intersection, found that in the peak hour, we actually found two times of the day that that, that neighborhood received that. In the evenings, the evening, we were finding about six percent of the cars that were trying to go north were turning that way. That ends up being about fifty-five cars, so about one of, like basically one a minute in that peak hour. There was also a significant amount of vehicles going the opposite direction when school lets out. Asheville Middle School, people leave there and they try and come back through that neighborhood. In our conversations with, with staff, it really kind of was this intersection, as well as Hilliard and Ashland, and the F that that intersection has, it currently has an F today, it will have an F if this project doesn't get built, and with our project, it proposes an F. We had conversations with transportation, and really the recommendations there, with us being in a central business district area, the recommendations were to actually improve pedestrian safety, because of those lists that I made reference to. So not only did that include creating a fully signalized intersection here, so that it created safer vehicle movements, but safer pedestrian movements, the project has, as part of a condition, will go and add pedestrian improvements to the Ashland and Hilliard intersection as well. While that is a fully signalized intersection, it does not have crosswalks for pedestrians, and so as a condition of this approval, the developer is funding that improvement at that intersection. One last thing, as I made reference to those, to the amount of vehicles that are currently turning through Morgan in the evenings, based upon the data that we analyzed, and the six percent that were going that way today, the studies suggest that we're really only looking at less than ten additional vehicles that would be interested in leaving this project in the evening and going straight into that neighborhood. So while we recognize there, there could be some folks from our development that would turn that way, it's really, we felt like the allowance of being able to put those signals there improved the overall safety for not only this project, but the community there today. So if there's other questions, I think that had covered the items that I wanted to make reference to, but I'm available for any other.
Can you talk about the additional, there was mention earlier about adding some traffic calming, can you talk about the effects of that on the project?
So, that is, as the conversation came about today, the idea of adding traffic calming along Morgan Avenue, the developer has conveyed that they would be willing to assist in that regard. The one benefit I see there is while our traffic leaving the uses that we have and the trip generation that comes out of our peak hours are as you would expect, in that seven to nine o'clock in the morning, and four to six o'clock in the evening, and so this would help mitigate any increase in traffic that our project would suggest. What it would also do is help with the current problem that happens when school lets out around that three to four o'clock hour as well, so it would be extra benefit there. So our client has, has agreed to participate with traffic calming there.
But in respect to our, what I brought up earlier, which honestly, I didn't really think about it until around three o'clock, when I was home going over some things, it is a high priority for this council to make sure that our transportation system is of high quality and reliable. And right now, pedestrian safety and improvements and traffic calming does not help the flow of traffic in that area, it's critical. I, after thinking about it, I called a couple bus drivers and asked them, you know, how critical is Ashland Avenue and Cox Avenue to your passage? Eastbound, northbound, the gamut, they have to use those pathways, those passageways, to get people there on time, wherever there is work, appointments, hospital, what have you. So, I really want, I really want the council to hear me, and I really want you all to hear me, this project has high merit, but the vitality of downtown cannot override quality of life, for our people who need our buses to get around, who need to get to school on time, who need to get to work on time, elderly people who need to get to their specialty doctors on time, because you all know who your neighbors are. But we have to take some time to really think about our bus, our buses, and the people who ride our buses. So if there's any way that we could think about it, because we don't want to lose this opportunity with you all, but we don't want to lose our obligation and what we've already stated around on-time performance, and doing what we need to do for, for people who live here, who've been living here. So is there anything that we can come up with today that will be that middle ground? Because approval, to me, would put a lot of stress on something that's already distressed.
The one thing I did want to point out is, part of the improvements at this aligned intersection include a new transit shelter and stop on our side, as well as making improvements to the existing transit stop on the other side. The intent of that is not only to provide safe pedestrian access to any residents in the South French Broad neighborhood, but it's really to promote and encourage our residents to use those transit systems, and provide safe access to the existing, besides improving the bus stops that are there today, we're providing safe access to get to and from the transit specifically.
Counsel, we need flow, honestly, and I know a lot of us came in here with our decisions made, but taking that into consideration, what are we gonna do? I recommend that we delay just a little while so that we can figure this out.
Well, so Mike, one question, when they did the traffic study, was there any specific consideration around the effect on transit? I don't, I don't know who would.
I know that the traffic study considered both vehicular and pedestrian activity, I'll need to do a little more reviewing of the study to check on transit, or maybe our city traffic engineer can speak, as he was an active part of the scoping of everything that was included in that study.
I would also have a question to Shanika's point about solutions. We don't have any of this in the city right now, but there is a thing, I think it's called signal preemption, is that right?
Just wrote it down.
Just wrote it down. Deborah and I think alike. For folks who don't know what that is, that's when a bus is approaching an intersection, if the light is red, they can hit a button and it signals the light to turn green, so that the bus essentially has priority. And again, we don't have that anywhere here, that might be something that we could explore, not only for this intersection, but maybe for some others. The thing, I mean, I totally agree with you, on-time performance of our transit system is enormously important. One advantage to creating this intersection here is that there is no other, there is no other cross between, between South Side and Hilliard, and so anybody who wants to go from one side to the other is just, right now is just jaywalking on a four-lane highway, essentially, if anybody drives there, they drive fast. So I like, I like the idea of creating that safe space for people to cross, but I would encourage us to look at signal preemption. Chris, I also wanted to ask, so you all have said you would be fine to include traffic calming on Morgan Avenue, you know, as we know, neighborhoods are more than just one street, and it occurs to me that if, once conversations get started with the neighborhood about this, that they might want to extend traffic calming into, further into the neighborhood, onto Daly or South Grove, and so, again, we haven't had those conversations, so we can't, we can't ask you to commit to anything, but what I would ask is, is whether the level of commitment could go beyond Morgan Avenue, you know, that might be one or two bumps, it's pretty short, and then people would be free to just, you know, fly on, so looking at the neighborhood a little more comprehensively.
Discuss with my client, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Is there a city traffic engineer? I'm sorry.
I was gonna suggest that, is there a city traffic engineer here? And while he's coming up, with your question about traffic calming, perhaps I would propose this way, we would add as a condition that Tribute Companies would be willing to pay up to thirty thousand dollars for traffic calming associated with whatever streets need it, want it, go through the process to get it approved.
Okay.
Okay, that way we've got a commitment. Okay, that way we, we've got a commitment there.
Yeah, and, and I know that that's a complex analysis that involves the fire department and it's not just what the neighborhood wants, it's also what other city services need, so.
That's correct.
I appreciate that.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Seabor, I'm the city's traffic engineer. I've heard a lot of questions, I guess, are there any specific questions you'd like me to try to tackle first?
Well, can, may I ask, uh, when, when, when we scoped the traffic engineering study, what consideration was given to the effect of transit and, and performance of the transit system for this project?
Sure, the, generally, traffic studies are focused on overall traffic operations. So how much, uh, delay and capacity is affected by a project? It doesn't focus on, um, is it a single occupant vehicle or is it affecting a transit bus? Um, it's just overall delay. Um, so there wasn't a specific, um, consideration to how bus performance, um, would be affected. Uh, but the study did focus a lot more than typical on pedestrian impacts. Um, and then the factor, uh, for transit was the importance of providing at least the, the adjacent bus stop facilities. Um, so those were all associated with and came from the traffic study. Um, and then the general, how much, uh, delay would be affected, but that, that's essentially what it covered.
But the transportation department hasn't raised any particular concerns about direct effect on transit?
Correct.
All right, I have a motion.
Uh, wait, we need to.
Oh, okay, let's go.
Okay. Any other?
Well, I have another question. Um, again, it, in your mind, is it, can, can we look at signal preemption at that interchange, intersection?
I think, uh, signal preemption is abs, should actually be looked at. I think it needs to be looked at s, more systematically. Um, at this point, like, we were, I was just talking with the designer on the project. Uh, right now, our buses don't have the equipment associated with it. So it, it needs to be looked at larger scale. I'm not that familiar with the transit master plan, um, but I would guess that might be one of the, the stages to it.
And this is, maybe somebody can just shout, somebody associated with the project. How long is it gonna take to build this? When is this gonna be finished? Assuming, assuming you get approval tonight, let's just, what I'm, what, the point I'm trying to make is we don't have to have signal preemption in place tomorrow. We are gonna have probably a couple of years, I guess. Three, three years. We have three years to figure out about bus flow on this.
But construction of this project would have the same impact. Traffic calming, traffic flow, it will say, have the same impact.
Thank you.
Other questions before I open it up to public?
So we're in a public comment, then we'll have debate here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless, okay. Um, so I'm gonna, unless the public really loves these, um, these boards. Can we take them down? I mean, I, unless you all wanna.
They're white, they're, are you taking them?
I'm sorry. Well, they're, they're basically, um, the same.
Or maybe just turn them around.
Yeah, but just not right where they were, 'cause I can't see anybody. Uh, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. The same rules apply, three minutes, uh, state your name. And if you have, if you have three other people that will raise their hand and agree not to comment on this issue, you get ten minutes. So, Mr. Nutter, why don't you, um, start us off?
Vice Mayor and, and all, I'm Dave Nutter. And, uh, what I really like about Asheville is that when we have a problem, no matter how big or grating, we try and do something about it. For many years, some of us have hoped that we could attract for-profit, private sector housing and mixed-use development to do their part to help heal our drastic affordable housing dilemma. After studying the drawings and documents as well as the excellent staff report, I see the for-profit, private sector, mixed-use Cox-Ashland project before you tonight as one answer to that hope and maybe perhaps a new plateau which can inspire future such cases. I hope so. Nothing in this world is perfect, but this really helps, in my view. The job cannot be done without the for-profit, private sector. I believe good public-private partnerships are essential for the city. Cox-Ashland is a fine project with excellent timing to build a positive destiny for the South Slope. It comes at a time when planning and urban design is developing a master plan for this growing, healthy and invigorating downtown area. The project promises to include approximately forty-nine units of affordable housing, uh, for twenty years and to thoroughly integrate these units into a splendid overall design which includes not only a total of four-hundred-and-eighty-eight housing units, but also retail and office space and excellent open space connecting the two avenues. The four-point-eight, four-point-six acre site sits at a prime location in the South Slope in relation to the Cox Avenue Tactical Urbanism Project and the South Side Greenway Connector. Architecturally, its massing, materials, colors, fenestration, streetscapes and ample parking seem outstanding to further the animation, equity and inclusiveness of the center of our city and county community. The Luici program helps to provide incentive. Here we are bringing together two important things. A vision and plan for the South Slope and an improved path for affordable housing. I think we have every reason to believe that we, as a spirited and inclusive city, will be proud of it. Please support this project, thank you.
Thank you. There was somebody who was standing up, a lady. Yeah, and then you in the back, right after.
Council members, my name is Sharon Summerall and I'm also on the Urban Forestry Commission. I have been dissenting this development since, since its inception. My complaints have been the same at the South Slope Neighborhood Association, Downtown Commission Planning and Zoning, and now Council. My problems are, the project is massive. They could have designed a project that protected the existing acre of trees even though some of them needed cleaning up of ketsu. It is a big stand of trees with wildlife that has settled in for years. They could have designed a green space in between all the concrete, metal and masonry siding. No matter how many trees they say they are going to plant on this project over what is required, per the ordinance, trees and concrete planters will not maintain the canopy of trees grown in the ground. Parking has been the discussion since the neighborhood meeting. Parking is going to be private and maybe will be open at night at a charge. The bottom courtyard will be open to the public only until five-thirty at night as it will be gated and shut after that. There will be no access from Ashland to Cox other than through this courtyard. The upper levels will be private for owners and tenants. As it is a CZ, stormwater has not been designed out. So far, the plan calls for the minimum requirements of meeting the current allowable. I would hope that their stormwater design would exceed the minimum, whether required or not, as what's there now is absorbing a huge amount of water and, um, and the proposed development is all hardscape. I cannot speak on affordable housing as I do not know of ten percent of the units that are dedicated at eighty percent AMI for at least twenty years and ten of those will take vouchers as a real figure for affordable. And what's the problem with having it designated as forever instead of twenty years? In our living Asheville comp plan for our future, I do not see this development needing the requirements as stated in the plan. One, creating a green infrastructure network around transportation corridor, corridor to address urban heat islands. Two, fostering resilient neighborhoods through placemaking and enhanced community engagement, particularly with minority communities. Three, using nature to enhance open space and stormwater management. This development had the ability to do the above if it had been designed accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Council, uh, my name is Michael Strat and I sit on the Multimodal Commission. Um, but these points obviously re, represent my feelings and not the, uh, commission. Um, I just wanna point out the, I think, what is the elephant in the room. Um, and I think Ms. Smith is, is pointing that up, um, in that this is, this is an obscene amount of parking that we're gonna be adding, uh, which comes with a, a lot of extra cars in the downtown corridor. Uh, it's my point of view that we should be, we should go the other direction and trying to eliminate the amount of cars that are currently in our central business district and throughout some of the core zones of our, our community. I'll have to say this, though, I think that, um, you know, this developer has, has done a, a pretty reasonable job and, and, and doing a lot of really nice things, uh, as part of this project to, to get it passed. Um, unfortunately, they're working within the, the current paradigm that we have of, uh, you know, we don't have a, a transit system that's functional, uh, th, in my perspective. I think it, it has a lot of room for improvement. And if you ask all these people to come and work and live in, in this area and we don't have a functioning transit system for them to rely on, how else will they make this happen, um, than by having a car to us, to, 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 to use at this point? So I think it's important for us to use this as an opportunity to remember that if we had a functioning transit system, um, that served, uh, served us better as a community, these projects wouldn't be so controversial. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, but I, I'm gonna have to lay the end black first and then.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Sandy Aldridge. I sit on the CPAC Committee, I'm an ABC student. Um, I'm gonna agree with Ms. Smith and I thank you for, um, pointing this out, um, showing your dedication to us, the locals. The bus system does not work the way it should. There's hardly any on-time performance because of the routes. Um, that nobody wants to ride on the buses to really see what it's like on a daily basis. Okay, and this is just going to cause chaos. Plain and simple. You know, and we're on the right track as far as affordable housing, but ten percent is really not a lot. And as far as the people that move in, um, some that have moved in other condos in the area like to harass homeless, like to harass us, uh, bus customers, um, as I would like to say. And I see it as another way to try to push certain people out of that, that area, um, is how I see it. And I know we can do better than that. We have a lot of people in this city that have great ideas, people that ride those buses. Um, in addition to that, I would like to see the renovation completed. As far as that little building that we all go into to get warm, we haven't seen anybody working on that in weeks. And we would like to know when it's gonna be done, 'cause there's cold temperatures already and we're not getting any answers. Would you please, please look into that? 'Cause the children, they get sick, they can't go to school, people get sick, can't go to work in the, the frigid temperatures. And thank you for letting me speak in this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm actually here to.
Can you say your name?
Nina Tobish, I'm sorry. I'm here to speak actually in favor of this project on a couple of additional conditions. Taking into consideration that this provides infill in a space where we could use infill in a city, bringing people closer to the center and residential is an extremely good idea. Would I like to see even more trees? I would, but I'm pleased that the developer is putting in more trees than is required. I think that's a step in the right direction. But if we're talking about the value of infill and getting, uh, assigning points for walkability, why are we providing for twice as many cars in the parking structure than the residents might need? It seems to me that if you're aiming for sustainability over the long run, reducing the number of cars and provisions for cars downtown is a great idea. If there were half as many parking spaces and none of them were available for use by people who do not live in the development, that would greatly reduce the traffic impact. And since one of the touted advantages of this development is its walkability, why not encourage people to walk? They are only a few blocks from the downtown core. There's going to be, I hope, some kind of, uh, retail amenities right on their first floor, hopefully including maybe even a grocery store, um, maybe another restaurant, additional amenities that residents can enjoy without even taking more than fifty steps from their front door. In short, I think another condition here should be that there be sufficient parking spots in this structure, one per apartment dwelling unit. And if people need additional parking, I gather we still have some surplus units available over on Cox Avenue for monthly rental that has still not been snapped up. So that's my suggestion, that you make a condition here for one car per unit for the dwellings there and no additional public access parking. That will address many of the traffic concerns. It will encourage the use of public transportation and for people to enjoy the lovely sidewalks to get them where they wanna go downtown. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, for the record, Joe Minicozzi. I live at, uh, sixty-two Cortland and, um, I've worked in and around the downtown for about fifteen years. I served as the Downtown Executive Director for the Downtown Association and been deeply involved in downtown planning issues. Uh, I think the thing to keep in context is that the city was progressive at doing things like removing parking standards and densifying the downtown. We do have a bus problem, we have a massive bus problem. Running once an hour is reprehensible for a city our size, but that's a financial problem. We need to get our, we need to get our, uh, headways up on the buses, we need to invest more in the system. Doing infill adds more value to the downtown and adds greater tax base and this, this project will do that. Are there things from an urban design standpoint that I'd like to see better? Certainly. Um, we should have smaller block sizes. The biggest problem on the South Slope is, is the size of the blocks. These are huge blocks and there should be more cross-connection through them. But we didn't do our job as a community during the downtown master plan process when we tried to identify that because there was a vocal contingent in our community that wanted to see no growth. We didn't do our job to proactively deal with this and now we're, you all are dealing with it here. Um, frankly, I would recommend that we listen to our, our commissions and folks that get involved in this stuff, that roll their sleeves up and try to seek solutions and try to get ahead of these problems. We all put our time in to do this stuff and we can be ahead of this rather than dealing with it at the last minute. Um, and I also wanna just reinforce that you have a downtown commission that studied this project and worked on this project and we should hear them out as well. So that's my, my comment on the support of the project.
Thank you. I thought I saw another hand. Anyone? Uh, yeah. Okay, so I am going to close the public comment, but the developer can come back?
Couple of things very briefly. The image on the top is the Chrysler Building, which was vacant and in foreclosure, um, during the recession. It's the first building that the Maynard's bought in the city of Asheville. They bought it when there was no parking available for that space. And I know that because I was on the board of the bank that foreclosed on it and we couldn't get any money to buy it. And so, but the Maynard's took a risk and they spent a lot of money fixing up that beautiful building. If you've been down there, you can appreciate the quality of what they did. It was so successful that they bought the lot next door and they built one-fifty Cox Avenue. They tried to match, um, the quality of the architecture to honor the motor mile of Cox Avenue with that structure and they did a, a really fine job at a time when no one was going down to that part of downtown. That there, there were no breweries other than Green Man, it was the only brewery on the South Slope at that time. The parking they solved by buying the lots across the street that were known as the Ledford Parcels. That's where they currently park. That's where they currently park the 72 units that are the Chrysler Building and 150 Cox. And it's where the adjacent retail and commercial space also parks. And it's where a number of other folks in that area currently park, all of which will be lost when this structure is created, which is partly why the building calls for almost 1,000 parking spaces. So in addition to all of those buildings right across the street on Cox Avenue, we all know from driving down Cox that there are significant parking demands, particularly in the evening. This project, if, if there is capacity, they will absolutely open the parking deck in the evening. And I, and I, and I respect Ms. Tovish's concerns about that, but I think the rest of us would agree, there is a need for parking on the South Slope. And if there are, if there are available spaces, they will be open to the public in the evening. But during the day, the hope is that between those buildings that I just showed you a minute ago across the street, the commercial and retail across the street, the other existing parking needs that exist right now that can be parked in here, you know, almost 500 units of housing, including 10% affordable, and then almost 90,000 square feet of commercial space. Commercial tenants, I'm a commercial tenant, we're in the city's center building, it was a critical factor as to whether or not we would be able to park, whether our clients would be able to park. We talk about economic development in the city. You can't lease Class A office space unless you have parking. And so that is why they're contemplating a parking facility of this magnitude. They've done it very thoughtfully in a way that it doesn't look like a parking deck, like some do around town. The outside, and I don't know that we have that up, it, it, it will be essentially a facade of units. They could not have been more thoughtful from an architectural standpoint to try to mitigate the massing of this entire development. You've heard the descriptions of how it's broken up. They didn't have to do that. A lot of developers wouldn't. It costs more to do that. They could have come in and just built one or two big, tall buildings. It would have been terrible and not in keeping with what we said we wanted in the living Asheville plan. I, I would respectfully disagree with Ms. Sumrall when she says we didn't meet it. If you were listening carefully to each of the things that she described, this project meets or exceeds them. I highlighted some, high-quality architecture and design. This is not your typical three-story walkout apartment complex. They, they've spent a tremendous amount of money and effort to get the very best product that they can for our city, a project that we will all be proud to walk down and experience. Infill development, we said we wanted. This is absolutely infill. Adequate capacity for residential and commercial uses, in particular promote long-term residential development downtown to a greater extent. I was before you on the Flatiron Project, very controversial. We were displacing commercial tenants. This, this building creates commercial space. They said, oh, we should convert the Flatiron into residential. It didn't make sense for residential, but this makes great sense for residential. Beautiful, nice residential, affordable for 49 families potentially. We said we wanted to encourage the adaptive reuse and redevelopment of obsolete structures. The space, if, if you've, if you've walked down either Asson or Cox and looked down in here, there are a couple of obsolete one or two-story buildings that need to go, and the rest is surface parking and cudzu. We can do better than that. We said we wanted to encourage ground levels that are activated for pedestrians and ideally blend parking structures into the cityscape. This does that. We said we wanted to plant more trees downtown and develop a street tree master plan for the downtown area. This plants, what, what was called for was 35 trees. We're looking at well over 140 new trees. This is, this is going to be magnificent from an urban planning, urban forestry standpoint. We said we wanted to encourage land use policies to support diverse housing downtown, including workforce housing and the preservation of affordable housing, and this does that, too. I, I respect the fact that this is a significant project. I totally respect the concerns about the transit system. I think we need help with our transit system. I, I would, I would respectfully disagree that during construction, there will be an enhanced traffic problem. On the contrary, I think the, the contractors that they will use on this project, and by the way, my client Tribute Companies, they not only are the developer, they also do the construction. And they will also, when this project is done, they will own it and they will manage it, because that's the kind of business they are. They're in it for the long term. They will do everything that they possibly can to mitigate added traffic associated with this construction. I can assure you of that, and Mr. Maynard is here tonight, and, and I'm saying that in public to remind him of how important that is. But that three years will give us time to do the kinds of things, make the kinds of investments that this city needs to make to address our busing problem. This project does not, there's no evidence that this problem, this project will measurably harm the already bad busing system in that area. There are other solutions to that problem. You did not hear from the city traffic engineer concerns about that. I, I like the, the signalization change, but, but the city's going to need to invest in software for the buses to make that happen. I can tell you that with respect to the new traffic signal that my client will pay for at a significant cost, they will make sure that it is, that they, they buy the necessary equipment so that when the city buses have the equipment necessary to do a signal change, it'll be ready. So we, we, we've tried really hard to build a project, to design a project that I think the city can be proud of. No project is perfect, as Mr. Nutter said. This one is, is really quite good. We would appreciate our, we would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now, now it's only council. Councilman Kapoor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I am, I'm very much in, in support of the project. I, I appreciate the, the concerns that we've heard tonight. I, I mean, as, as I, as I've sort of sat here, and I'm not a housing expert, but, but I've sat here on council and looked, looked at the development, the questions we've been, we've been asked to solve here, the developments that we've been asked to approve, this seems to check all the boxes for the type of development that we want to see. We, we need more housing in the city. We need more housing downtown. This is, this is not displacing old historic buildings. This is taking a lot of parking lots, space, and making them into housing. It's got a significant affordable housing component. It's got office space. It's got all the things that I think we really, truly need in a project. And, and, and I think to the concerns that were expressed tonight, I, I think there's, there's opportunities to address those again in, in a different way. I think if we, if we reject this project tonight, those issues will still exist. And again, you know, there's, there's always this question of, well, what could come next, right? There's, there's a lot of things that you could put on this, on these properties that are, that are by right. One of the things that, that I got an education in when I got on council, part of the reason I got on council, I think, was dealing with apartment units down in South Asheville. And one of the things that we pushed back on quite a bit was the issue of traffic. One thing I became educated a, a lot about is the relative, the less of an impact that, that housing, specifically apartments, have versus commercial uses. And, and I think in those cases, I became somewhat, I won't say an expert reading traffic studies, but looking at them in, in great detail. And, and, and I think not hearing, you know, concerns from our traffic engineer in the city about this, I think it's important for us to, for us to realize and for us to, to take in heart. So I'm going to be very supportive of this project, and I hope a majority of those on council will be as well.
Any other?
Yeah.
Okay.
We saw the project come through HCD, and while in HCD, I'll say the same thing that I, I said there, that it's not a great project. It's a good project, but it's not a great project. But as it pertains to affordable housing, that is, that is where I personally want to see us continue to, to put these units on the market, get these units out there as much as we can. Had a meeting last week with, with staff about some things as far as, I would have loved to have seen 60% AMI. I would have loved to have seen some, some deeper affordability. I, I am happy with the Housing Choice vouchers that are in the project. It's one of those projects where I don't, I'll just leave it at, it's not a great project. But I'm, I'm going to support the project. I think also the, the issues that were brought up about the transit in the area brings up larger issues of our ability to be able to fund the transit system to the, to the extent that it is operating optimally for the city our size. And I think that's going to take some effort of us as council members, and I think some of us are, are working toward that, hopefully in the future, the very near future, to be able to provide options on how we can do that, to make sure that transit is running optimally. I'm going to support the project. Again, I've, I've voiced my opinion with staff and the city manager about how this is definitely not what I want to see happen in the future as far as the percentage-wise of deeply affordable units, but I am okay with the Housing Choice vouchers and the affordable units that are coming on, online. So I'll be supportive, and we also need to definitely take a look in the future of, the very near future of how we are funding our transit system and what that looks like moving forward to be able to, to make it what this city deserves.
Comments?
Before today, I don't think anyone took into consideration the impact that this project will have on our transit system. I don't believe that the developers thought about it. I see where they put a lot of their thought, and, you know, just giving them the benefit of the doubt, I think they would have considered it and put more thought into it. They seem very honorable in following our plans, and I do, I do believe it was just a blind spot. But in noting that it is a blind spot, I think our traffic expert from the city, I don't think I heard that, that, that individual is, is not worried. I think that what I heard him say is it wasn't considered. That's a big difference, not worried and not considered. We're already desperate for an improved transportation system, and we can't take another hit. Do I believe that that should sink, this project? Not exactly. Do I believe we need more time to figure out, figure some things out? Yeah, because right now we're writing our approval off of some indefinence. We believe this will happen, and we're pretty sure, but months ago, we were protesting or unsure how we would plan, we would meet the requirements of our transit master plan. I'm going to stick with delaying approval. I don't think that motion will be supported here right now. So on that notion, I think I'll have to stick, stick with, or then say that I don't, I do not approve of this conditional zoning request.
Any other discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the Cox Ax, excuse me, Cox Ashland mixed-use development from Central Business District, CBD, to Central Business Expansion District, CBD EXP-CZ, for the construction of a new mixed-use development and finding the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that, one, the downtown future land use category of the living Asheville comprehensive plan anticipates a mix of uses as included this development. Two, the project enhances the pedestrian experience with widened sidewalks, active ground floor uses, and intentional urban open space with portions that are accessible to the public. Three, the proposal incorporates affordable residential units. And four, the project is compatible with the surrounding area.
Okay, I have a motion.
Excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor, I think there was an additional amendment made that we need to incorporate into that motion.
This motion includes, so I'll continue with the motion. This motion includes the amendment to the B1 conditions that the applicant will fund any traffic calming measures which the city deems necessary as a result of the project up to $30,000.
So I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, and because we know we at least have one dissension, if you could raise your hand on the, whether you're supportive? And those opposed? Okay, so that passes on a five to one vote. Okay, I'm going to, can we go find? Okay, I'll go find the minister.
It, it certainly helps if dedicated lanes is, is better. But yeah, certainly signal, bus signal preemption absolutely helps you if you're not, it gets in some places where, like, I'll say, where, with the, like, the timing of the signals is, is very particular. To hold on.
Do you think we could dedicate certain, carve out certain areas that cars can drive into?
Okay, so. Um, so now you're at. Now you may as well wait for just a second.
Yes.
It's not called to me.
She totally eye rolled at me. She's been freezing all night.
Okay, I think Brian would probably want us to go and get started. So we're, we have one other public hearing item, and that's a public hearing to consider a land use incentive grant to support affordable housing units at the Verde Vista Phase Two Development. Paul DeAngelo is going to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Management. Paul DeAngelo with the Community Development Division here to discuss the request by Verde Vista Two to utilize the land use incentive grant to support affordable housing units at the mixed-income rental development known as Verde Vista Phase Two. You have a staff report in front of you, and to review, Verde Vista Two has proposed a development of a second phase of the Verde Vista Apartments, 56 multifamily rental apartments on a 3.2 acre parcel. Conditional zoning approval was sought and given on May 28th, 2019. Among the conditions for approval listed in the exhibits was the commitment to six affordable housing units, which was 10% of the units, to serve 80% of the area median income for 20 years. The developer submitted a land use incentive grant, a Luigi application in September prior to the Luigi policy update that occurred on October 22nd, 2019, and requested that their land use incentive grant application be related to the policy effective at that time would have been the older Luigi policy. The proposal was in their Luigi application for six affordable housing units at 80% AMI for 20 years. This scored 40 points on the Luigi scoring matrix, which would result in an award period of four years. Final determination of where the bump in county tax assessment, looks like it will result in an annual grant award of $25,153. Over the four-year period, the total value of the Luigi award would be approximately $100,612. This follows council goals of quality affordable housing and an equitable and diverse community. Staff recommendation, staff recommends denial of the Luigi request as the developer has committed to providing 10% of the units, those six units, affordable to households to 80% AMI for 20 years, was committed as part of a conditional zoning approved on May 28th, 2019, without the need or request at the time for a land use incentive grant. While the proposed project does create six affordable rental units made available to households earning 80% AMI for 20 years, the award would commit city resources to a conditional zoning project. Part of this application, these projects did not require fiscal support. This could establish a precedent for future projects. The suggested motion would be to deny the request by Verde Vista Two to utilize the land use incentive grant to support the production of affordable housing units, as the commitment to provide affordable housing was already made as part of the conditional zoning approval without the state of need for a land use incentive grant. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe the developer is here as well. the commitment to provide affordable housing was already made as part of the conditional zoning approval without the state of need for a land use incentive grant. And I'm happy to take any questions and I believe the developer is here as well.
Paul, this, uh, this, this came before HCD. Could you also alert council as to what, I mean, I know what the, what we voted on, but just remind council what, what that committee's, uh, direction was as well.
I appreciate that, Councilman Young. Um, this did go to before HCD on November 26th of 2019 and it was a vote of three to zero for denial of the application.
Paul, I have a question. Um, the, whether this was a, um, the, the changes that we recently made to the Luigi policy seem to be important here, so tell us, remind us what has changed? Is it that the new policy requires these things to come together and the old one didn't? Is that?
Well, more particularly, the previous, um, policy, unless granted an exemption from city council for just cause shown, no grant would be allowed under this policy for projects which have received building permits was the previous. Uh, in the updated policy, October 22nd, we added language or that had been through city council with zoning approval, conditional zoning approval. So we did add that language in the new policy.
And what, read that original language again, please.
Unless granted an exemption from the city council for just cause shown, no grant will be allowed under this policy for projects which have received building permits.
Okay.
It was the previous language which was updated to then add the conditional zoning.
Okay.
And again, the developer, I believe, is here and may wanna speak.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you, Paul, for the staff report. My name is Bob Ost, I'm with the law firm McGuire Wood and Visit, and, uh, and we're here on the, uh, on the application for a land use incentive grant for the Verde Vista Phase Two project, which is located off of Bleach Tree Boulevard. Um, here with me tonight are Warren Suck of Civil Design Concepts, the engineer of record for this project, and Tom Egan, who's, is, is, is with the developer. Um, I wanna thank the staff for report and, for their report and analysis and for trying to work with us on alternatives as suggested by the, by the Housing, Housing Community, Housing and Community Development Committee, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, this is a good project. I don't think anybody disputes that. The project was approved as conditional zoning on May 28th. Uh, it does a lot of good things. In addition to the affordable housing, it's, uh, it, which was fifty-six unit building and it's, uh, and so that translates to six units of affordable housing. There are other benefits. There's a, the, the, and these are listed in the conditions. We're providing and improving a bus stop, uh, providing transit facilities, allowing the use of River Ford Parkway, which is a private road for, uh, for, for city vehicles. It's a, it's a good infill project, it's near a lot of, of other, uh, of, of employment centers and, and near a lot of transit facilities. Let me, I did, um, just hand this out to you if you don't mind. I have marked on here the approximate locate. I've marked on here the possible location of the Verde Vista project. You can see it's, it's a lot, it is near a lot of, of other, of urban centers, town centers, and, and employment anchor institution centers. Here it is, here it is on the land use plan. And I wanna show you one other thing here. This photograph here will give you an idea of the steep, steep topography of the, the site is, in a property, this, this location, gives you an idea of the steep topography there. It's not an easy site to develop. And on the, on the staff's review of the, of the, under the Luigi grant matrix, this project scores 40 points without even breaking a sweat. It's a, it's, it's a strong project, strong application. So against this backdrop, the staff's recommendation for denial was a little bit hard for me to understand and, 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 and it's apparently based only on the fact that the application was submitted after, after the conditional zoning was, was approved. It's not based on the merits of the project. As, as I tried to explain in correspondence to council, we, we really had no reason to know that the policy was changed and in fact, it did not change until after our application was submitted, over a month after our application was submitted. I didn't know, I didn't know about the recommendation for denial until the day before the HCD committee meeting. I was a little bit surprised. As, as this council knows and it happens, and it's, you know, kinda happened this evening and the last time you all considered, these, uh, conditions and conditional zonings are negotiated at the last minute sometimes, sometimes on the floor of the council meeting. And this condition for the inclusion of affordable housing was similar to that. It was, uh, it was not discussed as Planning and Zoning Commission, but it, it came up between the time that Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of it unanimously and when it got to council. And, uh, so, so it was added because, the condition for affordable housing was added because council asked for it. And the weekend before the meeting, which was the Memorial Day weekend, I suggested to the developer that, that affordable housing be added to the project and suggested that the, that, that, that the Luigi policy might help with the financial impact of that, just like it's supposed to. I sent it to him to perform a financial analysis and make sure the numbers would work for him and, and, and I, and the city was aware that I was gonna do this. The developer agreed to the inclusion of affordable housing and as someone who has worked on affordable housing for my entire career and, uh, and, and who participated in the drafting of, of this policy, I was gratified. In fact, I was thrilled that the, uh, that, that this policy had clinched the deal on this project. It did exactly what it was supposed to do. Considering what a good project this is and what a great program, the Luigi Grant Program is, it's, it's a shame that I have to use my time up here talking about, uh, uh, that I have to use my time up here in this way. I would much rather talk about the good things this project does and that's probably the kind of things you all would rather hear about. I understand why the policy has changed the way it has and that's, and that is, you all have a fund to protect and, uh, and what you want to do is, is avoid situations where people, uh, uh, obtain their zoning approval and then kind of as an afterthought, request, uh, request, uh, make, request the incentives to, to, to see if they can get it. That's not what happened in this case. Uh, the developer, the, the availability of these incentives was, was a, was a key component of the developer's decision to provide the affordable housing. And, and, and throughout this process, no one said that the timing of our submission would be an issue. This policy, and, and, and the resolution that you adopted amending your policy, it says the policy, the policy is supposed to encourage affordable housing where it might not otherwise be possible. This is just such a case and the policy worked exactly like it should have and its purpose should not be frustrated. Now, your policy, the old one and the new one, both allow for you to make exemptions for just cause shown to these timing requirements. I suggest to you that, that if you, if, if you do agree that the, that the request was made after it should have been, um, we don't think it was, but if, but if you agree with that, that there's a provision in your policy that allows this application to be considered on its merits and that's all we ask. Uh, it's, and, and with that, I'll, I'll sit down and, and Mr. Egan speak if he wants to, and Warren Suck is here to walk you all through the project, although you've already seen it, you, you approved it and we think it's a great project. I was happy to have worked on it, I'm happy to have worked on this policy, but we, we, we just asked for a fair consideration. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I do have a question.
You have a question?
I do. So, I mean, you and the correspondence you shared with, from the information you shared with council yesterday, or, I don't remember when honestly, but anyway, you, you shared an email exchange between you and me where you said, I have provided, I ask about affordability and you said I've provided them with the Luigi policy. And honestly, I had forgotten about that exchange until you sent it. I think that the concern is that all of, you know, I mean, you're, you're a lawyer, what do they tell you in law school? Think on paper. And you didn't think on paper in this situation. So you guys were discussing the Luigi in connection with this project, but we didn't really know that, or at least I, I will say I didn't know that. And so from our perspective, it just looks like you came forward, you offered six units from, you know, you, and this happens, right? Private developers put forward affordability because they know it's, it's gonna, it's gonna make it easier for them to get their project approved. And they've not asked us for anything. I think that was certainly the assumption that I had and the impression I had about this project. I think it, it, I would feel very different if, if you had said that night, we're looking at Luigi, we wanna reserve the right to come back with Luigi. Um, you know, I don't, that, I, that would have been a different situation, but you see what, what I think we're struggling with now is that it, it does look like, yeah, you got a conditional zoning for six units within the city putting nothing on the table and now you're asking for the city to put something on the table. And I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to say this, I don't not believe you, I don't disbelieve you, um, that you all were having those conversations internally. I think the rub and the problem is that, that, that wasn't shared with us during the conversations and so that's the challenge.
Even if it hadn't been shared with you and I, and I, I'm pretty sure I asked about this because the, the, the affordable housing didn't come up until the last minute, Planning and Zoning didn't even consider it. And, and, and so I'm, I'm pretty sure I asked somebody, uh, because I was aware of the timing consideration, would it be okay if we submitted our Luigi grant after the before, after the conditional zoning was approved? And, and, and I, I think I did that because it's the kinda thing I would have done. And, 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 and we were never advised that, that it couldn't work that way. Uh, and, and in fact, at the time, your policy, uh, didn't, didn't read like it does now. Your policy allowed for, for the, for the application to be submitted after the zoning was approved. And, 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 and I, I understand why you all need to, you know, you need to protect this trust fund, I really do. But in, in, in this situation, the affordable housing is not an afterthought, it's not a, it's a, not a financial afterthought, it is something that is, it is important to this developer, I think it's important to this community. And, 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 and we, we just asked for fair consideration on the merits. It's a good project and you all agreed with that. And, and we, we just ask you to, to help us out with the, with the affordable, with the affordable component of it.
And I may have a question for Paul. I think one of the other things that I have concerns about is.
Wait, hold on, Paul.
If we, yeah, maybe you guys can switch as I'm setting this up. Um, you know, if, if we were to say yes in this situation, what would the implications be for other Luigi projects that, with private developers that we have approved that might open the opportunity for them to come back? How many, how many of those do we, would we have?
Um, well, regarding Luigi applications, I think that there's about four out there and I guess with tribute tonight, that would be five.
Although tribute applied under.
The new policy, correct. So four under the old ones, but I may refer to Brad in legal about his thoughts on that part of it if he doesn't mind.
Thank you, Paul. I, I, Paul probably knows these numbers better than I do, how many we've had actually come through under the old policy language. It is correct to say that when the Verde Vista project was proposed to council, the policy did not have the requirement that these two matters, both the Luigi and the request for conditional zoning be brought simultaneously. Uh, it is also correct that under the old policy, as well as the new policy, as written, allow for council to take, uh, exceptions to, uh, any of those provisions if it deems that good cause exists in those situations. Uh, at this point, we have updated the policy and council has approved that. So I believe that any new project going forward would be subject to those new limitations and not, uh, be provided an avenue for recourse such as this.
And I don't know the, which probably was a better question, was how many conditional zonings have actually gone through city council without any, I don't know the total number there.
So that's actually, right, I asked the wrong question.
Right, okay.
The question is how many conditional zonings went through without Luigi that they might have.
And I know we just did the affordable housing, uh, local affordable housing guide
and we have about, um, I think 13 or 14 projects on there that were part of conditional zoning, so we had a few of those there.
That's, that's all I got. Are there other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Bob, when did the affordable housing piece come into play when developing your project? Or your client's project?
Oh, it, it came into play at some point after the, uh, after Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and before city council.
But it wasn't originally a, a part of your, the client's project?
It, it was not part of the project as originally submitted and the, and it, and, even without the affordable housing component, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it unanimously.
Well, and that's their, that's their job. I mean, the, the, that affordability conversation often just happens up here, so.
Well, I, I've, I've been in, in Planning and Zoning Commission meetings where the affordable, where the, where the fulfillment has come up.
Just wanted to make sure that, or clarify that when you, when your client submitted the original project, there was no affordable housing in it. It didn't, affordable housing did not come up until at some point after the P and Z process? Just wanna be crystal clear so I don't mess anything up.
Uh, there was, um, uh, we, it was not part of, it was not part of the original submission, that's correct.
And when you got the council, a conditional zoning was granted to your client without any city funds being dedicated to affordable housing? And your client accepted that, is that correct?
The, uh, the.
You didn't like to ask for any continuances or deferred consideration, you wanted that conditional zoning and you got it?
That's correct.
Okay. I think we had this conversation in HCD and I won't rehash too much more of it, but when, sitting up in, in this seat, when you have someone that wants to put forth affordable housing and not have any city dollars contributed to that affordable housing, that is a big plus, sitting in this seat. And to not know of any consideration of any Luigi dollars to be added for that, that, that affects, uh, in my opinion, I don't know about everybody else, but that affects my vote when I see a developer that comes up and says, we don't want any city dollars for affordable housing. That strengthens an argument to get conditional zoning because there are no, those conditions aren't included. To come after the fact and say, hey, we found, okay, now we got the zoning and we want Luigi now. I, I, I think we've had that conversation in HCD that, you know, that's not something that I'm willing to, to support. Now, I get that you're, you, you've said that, and correct me if you're wrong, but, if I'm wrong, but those conversations were happening behind the scenes possibly or something? I, I don't know.
But, but they were happening in individual phone calls that we had, like I do with every conditional zoning, I call around to council and, 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 and ask if you're okay with the project. And, and one or more council members said, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I'd like, I'd like to see affordable housing. And that's when it came up.
I mean, the Luigi part, not the affordable housing part.
I had, um, I, I went back and checked through my emails on this and, and there were, there were exchanges of emails with staff and, and, and with, with Councilmember Mayfield about the Luigi part of this.
So I would, I would, I'm empathetic to a, to a, to an extent, but not to a large extent in the sense of if this was a very important piece of your project, as it, as you're arguing now, then it should have been a very important piece of your project then. But the consideration of your project originally did not have any affordable housing in it, but it did when, when it came to council. So if all these moving pieces were coming together, in my mind, I would seem to think that it would be important enough to mention that we may need some city dollars to make this project work. We didn't hear that at your conditional zoning. We approved the conditional zoning with the effects of the city will not be putting any extra dollars into this project. That is not the case now. So I'll, I mean, I'll digress, but I, I probably won't be supporting this, um, unless there is, I, I don't know. I, I, I've heard this before, but I, I won't support it. Maybe there's other people that, that will go.
Any other questions? We do have a public hearing on this, so I am gonna need to open the public hearing, but if anyone has a, yes, but.
Let me respond to one thing and, and that is, at, at the time this came before council, it was not a requirement of your policy that the, that the application for the grant be submitted before the, before the conditional zoning was approved. If we had known that, uh, we would have, we would have taken appropriate steps, either to delay the, 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 the conditional zoning or, or do some, some other appropriate thing to make sure that you all got them at the same time.
I would just say, it speaks volumes to the project that affordable housing wasn't originally placed in the project as a priority.
Can I ask one, Bob, one more question? If, if, so if we don't approve this, what is the impact of that on the project? Does it not get built?
Maybe the applicant wants to.
Yeah, that's, neither, neither one of you.
Well, we're, we're still thinking about that because we've only gotten, only become aware of this in the last couple of weeks.
Uh, Tom Egan with Mission Properties. Um, I wanna thank you all for your time and energy on this. I know it's hard to wrap your heads around all these agenda items that you're, that you're looking. you're looking at. But yes, affordable housing was not part of this project when we originally went in for conditional zoning, conditional zoning. And it was brought up by Bob basically a week or a couple of business days beforehand for me to evaluate financially. We looked at the program, and we thought it was a great program. We, it shows that, you know, the city is behind getting this affordable housing to happen in these projects. It is hard to get developers to agree to affordable housing in these projects. It is a financial hit. But it showed us that the city was willing to work with the developer, and we thought it was a good program. Bob did ask me at that time, I said, "If asked, I think we can do this. We take a financial hit, you guys obviously take a financial hit, and the city gets what it needs. We fully understand that." It was my understanding, reading the program, that we had to get the Luigi grant approved prior to a, our building permit. At this moment, we do not have our building permit. We have held off on the building permit intentionally, because that was the rules. We were following the rules as stated at the time. So I just want, again, black and white, cancel me young, I understand, black and white. It does look like I came at this after the fact. That is not true. I can show you email streams with Bob of our conversation. Just so you know, it wasn't after the fact, we're not asking for dollars. The agreement was, we understood we would be working through this Luigi grant for those agreement for the affordable housing. So I just want you, you guys to understand that. That, that was our intention. So again, thank you very much, and, you know, we just, we just hope this works out for all of us.
We did have a separate conversation in HCD. I don't know if, if y'all had the opportunity to entertain it about if you wanted to build some additional units and come back and, and ask for the Luigi, we would be able to entertain that aspect of it.
Or make, make six more units.
Or make six more additional units, that's correct.
To speak to that-
And on the newer units, not the previous ones.
Right. You were, you were taking the additional units off the table and not giving us the benefit of 20%, only 10%. We, we just think that was a fair proposal.
Well, so, so what, would 20% with a full Luigi on the 20% be an option? I mean, I realize I'm asking you to sort of run numbers.
You don't have to ask me, I've done it. It, it's not a feasible option at this point. We do have our, we do have all our loans in place. They've been fully evaluated, fully vetted. You're not able to go make that change at this stage of the game. We got this project completely vetted with the 10% affordable units, with our bank line.
Including the, including Luigi? So are your lenders, your lenders are counting on Luigi?
Yeah.
Your lenders are including Luigi?
Yes.
Without you having it?
Yes.
It was part of the package that you gave to them?
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant before I open the public hearing?
No, but I have one more question for Paul.
Paul?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm just trying, I don't know, I'm getting soft in my old age. So the old policy had this caveat about building permits. It is likely that every Luigi, no, sorry. It is likely that every conditional zoning that we approved without Luigi that had affordable units is, already has their building permits, right? Because we actually haven't done one of those in a while. So what I'm getting at is the presidential value. If we were to say yes to this, are we really opening ourselves up to other private developers who have, who have agreed to include affordable in their projects without Luigi?
Except for pulling the permit, is it?
With the previous conditional zonings, at this point, yes, they would all, for the most part, I imagine, haven't, have their building permits, so that would be-
So nobody's going to come back and say, "Well, now I want Luigi on mine."
They've already pulled their permits.
Because they've already pulled their permits. That's what I'm getting at. Do we have, can we, do we have a way to check that? I mean, again, I think that's probably true, but-
I would think so. I'm not sure the last conditional zoning that went through, but shortly after, usually when folks do that, their next process is going to be, you know, moving towards construction and building permits.
Right, right.
But I, I don't know if there's any-
Without going back and checking each one of those, we can't say for certain if they have all reached that threshold and therefore cut themselves off from that presidential value. It's likely, there is a limitation on how long you have with the conditional zoning before you must start work, but I can't, I can't say specifically.
I don't know if the caveat in the policy, the old policy, where it says unless granted an exemption by city council, then they could still come forward and look for that exemption, I don't know. Based on the precedent that-
Right. So we're going to open the public, are we ready to open the public hearing? So if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Yeah, I saw you jumping out of your seats.
I was here at the council meeting when this development was discussed. There was a robust discussion of the cost of the affordable units, of the time period for which the affordability provision would last, the number of units. I remember this being a very extensive and thoroughly vetted discussion about the trade-off of affordability units for this approval. I never heard the word Luigi. I am shocked that a developer would do its funding for a unit, for a development of this scope, and I say this as a real estate broker, with their banks, proposing that part of the affordability offset financially would depend on a Luigi grant that they had not requested, which had not been approved, and which, for which there was a vanishing window for the timeline of the permits and the start of construction. To me, this seems like returning to the well and just hoping that somehow city council will bountifully decide to reach into this fund and provide funds that were never on the table when it approved this project. Honestly, I'm kind of shocked at the hootspot of it. It seems outrageous to me. And I hope that you will listen to city staff and to the relevant committees who have said that this is a bad idea and deny this application. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Questions, comments, or a motion?
We should just note that, Nina, to your point, this is not actually giving away any money from the housing trust fund.
Oh, yes.
This is, this is the, the way this works is they pay us and then we give it back.
Yeah, we keep using this acronym Luigi, which is actually really Luigi, but Luigi is easier to say.
It's more fun, too.
Yeah. But, but it is a program where if you provide something like affordable housing in a project and you meet what's called the "but-for" test, so but for this grant opportunity you wouldn't otherwise be able to do your project, you qualify for, it's essentially like a tax rebate. So the increase in the property tax value of the property and therefore the increased potential property tax payment, a portion of that can be remitted back to you in the future after you have finished your project. So it's, it's a pledge against future increase in property tax payments, the portion of which comes back to you. But, you know, the problem here is we now have changed our policy to make it a requirement that the Luigi, Luigi grant application come with the conditional zoning, as was demonstrated earlier this evening on an earlier project. And at the time this project came through, that was not a requirement. However, it's always been a requirement that we have the "but-for" test. So but for the grant, this project would not be viable. And that's the, I think where we're getting hung up, because we, this project came through, Luigi grant wasn't discussed at all, there was a proposed percentage of affordable units in the project, and it was approved. So it, it, without the mention of, "Oh, by the way, if this grant doesn't come through later on, we won't be able to finance this project." So I think that, I think if I'm capturing it, that's kind of where we're, I'm looking at Paul, that's kind of where we're getting hung up on this.
I'll make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Okay.
I move to deny the request by CCC Verde Vista to LLC to utilize land use incentive grant to support the production of affordable housing units because the commitment to provide affordable housing was already made as part of the conditional zoning approval without the stated need for a land use incentive grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes our public hearings agenda. We have one item of new business. We do not have a closed session tonight, council. Does everyone want to barrel on through? Or, because we do have a number of people signed up to speak under public comment, so this would be an opportunity to take a break? No, not breaking. We're not, okay, okay, we're not. Is this side of the agree with the no breaking? Okay. All right. Okay. And, and again, I see some folks that came in a little bit later, so just to be clear, the resolution regarding the climate emergency, which was added on, has now been removed again and will be considered during one of our January meetings to allow for a longer period of time for the Sunrise folks to work with the Sacy folks and hopefully come to an agreement around the wording of a resolution both, both feel they can support. So we're looking forward to that. And again, my thanks to all those that are involved in that process. All right, so we need a motion to recuse Councilman Haynes on item A of new business.
Make a motion to recuse Councilman Haynes on new business item A.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Wait, you, you can stay here, though, if you want to. Is that all right? Do you have any? Nobody has any? Okay. Just, yeah, there's also, you know, people. Okay. Okay, this is a resolution approving a housing trust fund loan award requested by Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity to allow them to develop for-sale affordable homes at sites across the city and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all documents necessary to give effect to this approval. And again, Paul, you're on, on-
On fire tonight.
This is your night. Yes.
It's not just me, we have the whole team, but Paul DeAngelo with the Community Development Division here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Management, Legal, here to discuss a request by Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity to utilize the housing trust fund to construct for-sale affordable housing on sites across the city of Asheville. A little background, staff has been working with developers, whether mission-driven nonprofit or for-profit developers, looking at infill opportunities for home ownership. Particular focus was given to Asheville neighborhoods that are threatened with displacement and rising home costs. An efforts to make home ownership more available to households in Asheville who wish to attain housing stability, stability and develop wealth, but would otherwise be challenged without some sort of support. The proposal coming forth from Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity proposes to complete eight homes to make them available for sale for households at below 80% area median income. Particular focus will be given to households at or below 60% area median income or AMI. Sales prices are expected to be in the approximate range of $190,000 to $235,000. This is a housing trust fund loan request of $860,000 that would be leveraged with additional funding. The balance of the $860,000 will be drawn upon as needed to complete each home. The loan fund will not accrue interest. After home buyer selection, qualification will be verified by Asheville city staff. It is anticipated that $540,000 of the housing trust fund loan will be paid back and returned to the housing trust fund account via sale. The remaining housing trust fund dollars in each home will convert to a down payment assistance loan to be secured by a deed of trust and will be paid upon transfer or sale of the property by the homeowner. It is anticipated that construction can begin shortly after loan closing, and homes may be available for sale by spring of 2020. Habitat's development schedule calls for five of the homes to be available for sale by the fall of 2020. This follows along with council goals of quality affordable housing and an equitable and diverse community. The pros on this project, again, infill opportunity for a for-sale project. The effort to take on this project acknowledged also the threat of displacement in many of Asheville's neighborhoods. And also working with an experienced partner like Habitat. One con noted is the full $860,000 principal would not accrue interest and produce no program and come at the conclusion of the program. Fiscal impact, the project withdraw $860,000 from the housing trust fund. The loans, both to Habitat and the homeowners, would be structured to require no interest payments, preventing the receipt of program income. The suggested motion to approve here to approve, approve the request by Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity to borrow $860,000 from the housing trust fund. And Community Development Division does want to give particular thanks to our team, particularly Andrew Mayron for all his work on this, especially around infill and homeownership that we've been talking about, as well as Sam Powers and Kathy Ball and Deborah and Legal for all their help with these trust fund loans, land use incentive grant, et cetera. And I believe the developer's here, perhaps behind me somewhere, but Andy's here to answer questions.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
I don't have any questions, I have comments, but I can defer them.
Okay. Do we want to hear?
Good evening, I'm Andy Barnett with Asheville Area Habitat. Madam Mayor, council, thank you for considering this. I'm going to also thank you for your leadership in promoting homeownership as an eligible use equal to rental housing production under the housing trust fund. It really has created quite a bit of momentum to, to move this particular request forward. And I also want to thank Paul and his team for coming to the table with us in a spirit of partnership to find ways to put a program together under the housing trust fund that supports the creation of affordable homeownership units. As Paul mentioned, we'll be targeting households at and below 70% of area median income. Our typical area median income that we serve is, is well under 60% of area median income. We are really able to make homeownership affordable to folks who otherwise wouldn't have that as one of their housing choices. We're also very excited to be working within the city of Asheville in infill neighborhoods. Sites for six of the eight units considered here have been acquired, and they are in neighborhoods in Asheville that are seeing significant pressure with price increases. Three of the units are in Shiloh, one in Southside, one in West Asheville, and one in, in Royal Pines in South Asheville. Two of the units are under construction already, so we are very much moving forward with this, with this project. I know there's a, one of the cons in the staff report is about the, the fact that these construction loans aren't earning interest. These are very fast projects relative to rental development projects, and with two of them already under construction, and two of them being acquisition rehab projects. We see the, the lost interest revenue on the city's part being very minimal in terms of, in terms of the, the con from that standpoint. So appreciate your consideration tonight and happy to take any questions that you might have about the project.
Want to have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I've just been dying to speak. I am beside myself. I am elated, I am happy. And the reason that is, I remember having conversations with you almost over a year and a half ago, maybe, and talking about homeownership opportunities for individuals who are at, at that 60% or lower, homeownership opportunities that are actually affordable. This is the first project that we will hopefully be able to approve for homeownership opportunity. Was I getting ready to get buzzed? And so I'm, I'm, I'm happy that this is the first project to come through, but just want to add a couple of, one other thing that I did not hear mentioned, but there are individuals who have purchased homes from Habitat that are in that Housing Choice voucher program, where those Housing Choice vouchers can be converted to help pay for their mortgage. So this is one of those really, this is a really big deal to me. And I just, it wasn't mentioned, but it was like, we have a, a, a group of people in this city that are just clawing at trying to obtain homeownership and build generational wealth in some means, and this is going to do that. So I don't want to downplay the importance of this project being the first of its kind with the city and the ability for individuals in that family self-sufficiency program that have those Housing Choice vouchers to be able to convert that to mortgage payments. That is huge. And so I'll give you the- That is huge. And so I'll give you the golf clap.
Can I, I just want to add, Andy, and I said this at HCD, that I really appreciate Habitat's growing flexibility in the kinds of projects that you do for decades. Habitat had one model, and you're now branching out into doing these kinds of projects. Single lots scattered in different parts of the city. You're doing a multifamily project. And that, you know, I just, as I said at HCD, I wish, I wish you had been doing this ten years ago, because I went to your predecessor with probably a dozen lots in the Burton Street neighborhood that would have been perfect for this. But you weren't there yet, but you are there now, and you're leading the organization in a really, a really good way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's really equal measure to the flexibility of the current city staff as well to get this partnership together.
Julie jarred my memory because this is, Habitat's been doing what they've been doing over an extended period of time without city dollars. And this also is the first time that you've come before the city for those dollars, as far as it's been told to me.
For Housing Trust Fund.
Yes, for Housing Trust Fund, yes.
Well done. I'll add the golf.
All right, we, so we'll need a motion. Keith, would you like to do the honors?
Yes.
Okay.
We need some public comment, don't we?
Yeah, but this one will do a motion and then we take public comment.
All right.
It's not a public hearing item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity to borrow eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? No. Okay. All right. In the world of city biz, no comment is a positive support. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Yay. Okay. Okay, that concludes our printed agenda for this evening. I do, as I mentioned, have a number of people that have signed up to speak. And before that happens, Councilman Kapoor.
I just had a quick recognition. APD Senior Police Officer Justin Booth was recently awarded the Crisis Intervention Team Officer of the Year by the Western Carolina affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Officer, Senior Officer Booth has been with the APD since 2008. He's a very humble person and didn't want to make a big deal about this, but I think it's important to mention his success because it reflects very well on Justin as well as on APD. So if you're watching, Officer Booth, congratulations on winning this important award.
Congratulations, Officer Booth.
And we had kind of a little bit of a busy day, so this one fell, fell to the wayside, and I apologize for not making this recognition early, but our own city manager received an award last night down in Charlotte, and you're going to have to help me with the title of the award. Tell me the title of it.
Women Leaders Initiative.
Women Leaders Initiative. It's a big award. Come on.
Women Leadership Initiative Land Use Champion.
Right, so ULI Charlotte, the Urban Land Institute had their ceremony last night and honored the folks that were recognized, and you are in good company with a lot of.
Very humble.
Superwomen, and so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. The first person I have signed up to speak is Dawn Chavez. Same rules apply, three minutes. Yep.
Hi, I'm Dawn Chavez, the Executive Director of Asheville Greenworks. I'm also on the Urban Forestry Commission. And I came here tonight to say thank you. Thank you to the council for approving funding for the gap analysis that was done a couple of years ago to review our urban forestry programs in the city and see where the gaps were. Thank you for approving funding for the canopy analysis that was recently completed. Thank you for those of you who were able to attend the symposium, Climate Change in Asheville's Urban Forest, on November fourteenth, especially councilors Mayfield, Haynes, Kapoor, Young, the mayor, and the city manager. Also at that event, we had Amber Weaver on a panel speaking, and it was well attended. We had about four hundred folks attend that evening, where we presented the results of the canopy analysis and talked about some of the impacts of losing urban tree canopy in our city. I also announced at that event that we have a goal of planting fifty thousand trees in the city of Asheville by the year 2040. And that's not Greenworks' goal alone. We're going to need a lot of help. It's more of a challenge to our city. In order to achieve that, we'll need to plant twenty-five hundred trees each year. Greenworks has committed to planting a thousand trees. The other fifteen hundred have to come from somewhere else. I want to thank Councilman Kapoor for his support and making a personal pledge of ten thousand dollars as a matching challenge that was announced yesterday, and we've already received over twenty-six hundred dollars towards that. So thank you so much for all your support of the urban forestry program.
Thank you.
Dawn, question. If someone wanted to just plant trees on their own property, is there a way for them to inform so that they can be part of the initiative? I mean, just if they?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I hadn't thought of that before. But yes, they can contact Greenworks, and I'll put some more thought into how we can collect that kind of information.
I mean, because at our house, we're thinking about putting about six trees up.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, we also held a tree giveaway in October and another one in March, so where we gave away over six hundred trees, those combined, to Buncombe County residents to plant on their own property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Reed Thompson.
Okay, we'll hold it.
Alex, I think you put down lines. Am I saying it?
Yes.
All right, thank you for the time. Thanks for everybody being here tonight. I'll keep my comment brief this evening. I know that there's a lot of attention on the meeting tonight because of everything that happened with the climate emergency resolution. So a lot of people expected it to be on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to come up here and use my time to indeed clarify that it is not on the agenda because Sunrise Asheville requested that it not be. There was a lot of confusion about that today from the public, so I just wanted to make that extra clear to everybody here and who might be watching that that is by our request. And that is because the version outlined and endorsed by SASEE was very far from alignment on what we think is important with accountability and a timeline. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue working with them. We hope to come to agreement together, move forward together, and hopefully have the resolution that we agree on on the next agenda. So thank you for that opportunity to keep working with them. I also just wanted to say in my time that I am with Sunrise, but I'm also here in solidarity with Just Economics and want to point out, like Councilmember Smith said and touched on this evening, the deep importance of the transit budget. We understand, as Sunrise, and I know many of you understand, that sustainability and climate change is really a comprehensive issue, and it must be addressed from many angles. Transit is most certainly a very important part of that. And so I would encourage you all to, I would just say that we, we really need a better bus system. We really need a better transit system. And I would encourage you all to ensure that there is funding in the next budget cycle to improve that for the people of our community, for, you know, economic mobility as well as sustainability and community health. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say, just to be clear, just to be totally transparent, that the conversations this afternoon around the resolution, I think council was ready to move forward. Sunrise, as Esther has repeatedly said, is, we all have an interest in continuing the conversation, and we're grateful for your commitment to do that.
So I was recently at a mayor's conference, and the mayors were discussing the public comment, how they handle in each city, and the many mayors said the hardest part was getting council not to keep talking back to all the people making public comment. So we're not supposed to, we're supposed to just hear from you, but, but I appreciate some of the clarification. The next person signed up to speed is, oh, Reed Thompson. Your, yes. Kathy Scott.
I'm Jennifer speaking. Thank you. My address.
Okay. Richard Farman. I saw Richard here earlier. Did he leave?
I think he's here.
He left, okay. Nina Tovish.
Never Nina.
Max Manler.
He left.
He left, okay. Chad Brooks.
I will need more time than just the three minutes, and I do have.
You have three people to yield their time to you?
I do.
Two, three, yes.
Okay.
You know what, we have, are you going to use the overhead? Because we have this displaying still.
No.
Okay.
No.
Will it just cut off?
I see a power button up on top.
Maggie, can she see? Look at that.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Hopefully, I won't need the full ten minutes. I will be presenting a detailed letter to the city clerk addressed to you, Madam Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Chad Brooks. I'm a resident of the city of Asheville, and I worked for the Asheville Fire Department from 2004 to 2013. I'm here today in full support of and defense of Division Chief Joy Ponder, Asheville Fire Department Division Chief Joy Ponder. I have had experiences with Chief Burnett that bear directly on Chief Ponder's situation. I don't believe Chief Burnett's responses were isolated incidents. I believe they show a pattern of behavior that the city of Asheville has an obligation to address. If I may state the obvious, Joy Ponder is top-notch. As a person, as a firefighter, and as a senior fire officer, she is top-notch. As you may have already observed, this is a near universal belief amongst her colleagues and husbands since joining the department in 1998. I left the department with a medical disability retirement in 2013. The examining physicians at the time attributed my condition and subsequent retirement to stress. Not the stress of being a firefighter. I loved being a firefighter, but instead the stress of trying to report incidents of great concern, one of which, one of which resulted in the death of a patient, to fire Chief Scott Burnett. The incidents that brought me to Chief Burnett's office centered around my immediate supervisor after I was promoted to engineer in 2009. It seemed obvious to me that his erratic behavior and alarming decision-making would be considered completely unacceptable by our employer, the city of Asheville. I felt morally obligated to speak up directly to the head of the department about this volatile, unstable person who was in a supervisory position. One of the many incidents I reported to Chief Burnett involved my crew's response to a house fire. My station received a call for a structure fire, and as the driver of the truck, I chose the route that would ensure we arrive as quickly as possible, as possible. As we set out, my captain suggested that we go a different direction, which was confusing to me, because it was clearly the slower of the two options. After continuing with my suggested route and arriving first on the scene, out of about six trucks responding, my supervisor began screaming at me in front of the rest of the crew, quote, "This is just great. Now we're first, and I have to write the report. I should make you do it and see how you like it." I realized then that when he had asked me to take a different route, it was a ploy to intentionally slow us down so that we wouldn't be the first truck to arrive, and he wouldn't have to spend an hour in front of the computer writing the report. We should all think about that for a minute. Someone called 911 because their house was full of smoke, and my captain wanted to take a roundabout way that would guarantee that we would arrive later. On top of that, he was so irate when we arrived that he completely showed his cards. There was no need to guess what his intentions were. He had spelled it out for all of us. This is not an isolated incident. The same supervisor ordered me, the driver, to respond to a medical call of difficulty breathing, as if it were a non-emergency, meaning no flashing lights, no sirens, and at a slow rate of speed. This is unheard of in the fire service and goes against all protocol. My captain was in a foul mood that day, and after entering the truck and slamming his door, he shouted, "This is stupid that we have to do this." Halfway to the residence, after sitting at multiple red lights, the difficulty breathing was upgraded by dispatch to a full cardiac arrest. Someone's heart had stopped, and they needed our immediate assistance. Our patient, someone's father, someone's husband, died that day, in part because the Asheville Fire Department was in a bad mood. I will never forget that grieving family who to this day know nothing about the events leading up to our arrival. Chief Burnett didn't agree with these incidents. He did not believe they were of major concern. In fact, when I told him that I was surprised that my captain had not been severely disciplined, he erupted and screamed, quote, "Do your damn job." That last meeting was the third or fourth time I had asked to speak with him regarding this issue, and he was obviously done with me. It was clear that he wanted me to shut up and go away and stop making waves. I'm very confident in my recollection of these events, because I recorded my meetings with Chief Burnett, and I reviewed them in preparation for this public comment. During that same time period, there was a sexual harassment incident centered around a battalion chief in the Asheville Fire Department. This city employee used his city-issued cellphone to take pictures, excuse me, of his genitalia, and then sent those pictures to spouses of other firefighters. This act was nothing shy of workplace sexual harassment. Those victims became whistleblowers and in the end settled with the city. That battalion chief not only remained an Asheville firefighter, but shortly thereafter was promoted by Chief Burnett to the upper administration of the Asheville Fire Department, where he is still employed today. He has a seat at the all-important table, making crucial decisions for the residents of the city, while Chief Joy Ponder has had her responsibilities stripped and is being forced to defend herself from Chief Burnett's baseless accusations of poor performance. My experiences with Chief Burnett have left me disappointed, to say the least. Again, with Chief Burnett's blessing and with me silenced, my former supervisor didn't skip a beat. He remained in his same position at the same fire station and retired just a few months ago with his full pension. He should have immediately been fired and possibly had charges brought against him for the death of that patient. Chief Burnett decided to defend and promote the picture-taking battalion chief. He should have immediately been fired and possibly had charges brought against him for sexual harassment. Chief Joy Ponder, meanwhile, is pulled from her regular duties so that she could, quote, "work closely to and under the direct supervision of Chief Burnett because of her performance Chief Burnett isn't running a good old boys' club. The Asheville Fire Department is one of the most vital departments in the city and needs The Asheville Fire Department is one of the most vital departments in the city and needs to be managed as such. There's no place for favoritism in any department, especially one where life and death are such real concerns. Chief Burnett is clearly capable of circling the wagons around his friends. It seems that no matter what the offense, if you're a member of the club, you can have full confidence to behave in a manner most consider appalling. My job as an Asheville city firefighter was to protect the citizens of Asheville, and I had assumed that this was my fire chief's main concern as well. Instead, it was to continue the structures of cronyism and to protect the good old boys' network. I'm sharing this information with you because the city manager has said she takes grievance complaints like Chief Ponder's very seriously. With no due respect, with no disrespect, I've seen little evidence of this. I thought that the information I'm presenting here might bring some urgency to directly address the very serious nature of Chief Ponder's grievances. I just want to say that this woman we're talking about is an incredible woman, and she has been hung out to dry. From what I understand, even to this day, she had to go back to work. She had breast cancer and surgery. She lost all of her time, and she's had to go back to work. And from what I understand, she has been put right back in the position that Chief Burnett wanted her to be working directly under him. And that's where she is today, working directly for the person who she made these grievances against.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a personnel matter, and so none of us can comment in any way, but of course, we have staff here who have listened to you, and so thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Sarah Benoit.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Benoit, and as usual, I'm just here as a concerned citizen from West Asheville. Thanks for updating us on where things are at with the climate emergency declaration, but I'd still like to read my statement. Tonight, I'm here again to advocate that our city staff, council, and SEC declare a real climate emergency and begin focusing on an immediate transition to renewable energy by 2030, as well as begin developing plans for how our working community and low-income communities will be supported as this transition takes place. Although our city is full of many people making as much personal effort as possible to reduce our carbon footprint, we're not doing enough. As a working person, I can conserve energy, eat local, buy local, carpool whenever I can, walk as much as possible, use less plastic, garden in my yard, et cetera, et cetera. And I have been, but I've been doing this all of my life, and so have many others, and at this point, we all know that it's not enough. To solve the problems we're facing as a global community when it comes to climate change, the destruction of our forests, the pollution of our oceans, rivers, lakes, and streams, the toxicity of our food systems, and the lack of sustainability present in all of our lifestyles, we must make systemic, long-lasting, innovative change in our society as a whole and in our local communities. This means we have to begin challenging our local and state laws. It means we have to have courage and push against the old rules and system so we can transform our city government as well as the state and federal government. It means we have to listen more and consider that our way of doing things in the past is antiquated, no longer relevant, and does not address the current crisis. I don't have all the answers for how we can solve these global issues, and I know some of you are already proposing some systemic change in response to these urgent issues, and I'm grateful for that. But I think as a whole, we need to think about how quickly, efficiently, and effectively we take action and implement bold shifts as a community. I know we'll need to ask for help, expertise, innovative and creative thinking, followed by bold action. I know that we'll all be forced to change the way we think, the way we believe, and most of all, the way that we act. This is why we must start now. We have to give the children of today the best chance possible to have a future. We have to begin to value nature and see ourselves as part of it, not the lords and masters of it. We have to build a new Asheville where every member of our community is valued and prepared for the changes to come, and we need to give special attention to communities that have long been ignored and left behind. It's time for us to change, think, act, and thrive collectively and communally in a way that we've never done before. I hope and pray that we can do it.
Thank you. Matilda Blues?
My name is Matilda. As was made abundantly clear by teenagers and young adults on Friday, when 15 members of Sunrise Movement Asheville surrendered themselves for arrest when told to leave a council building, which refused to openly hear them, we are in a climate emergency. For those on council rejecting to acknowledge the seriousness of what is ahead of us, or even grasping for a middle path, which will please Duke executives, coal companies, and other executives whose industries are dependent on fossil fuels, such as tourism, if you haven't figured out already, the tide is turning. I stand before you. I am 32 years of age. I am a trans woman. Tens of thousands of scientists predict that in 2030, when I for one would be 43, our climate catastrophe will be in full swing, and without committed actions starting now, drawing down to net-zero carbon emissions by 2030, human extinction appears likely. Though I am white, I am working-class queer trans woman, and if increased violence and torture against black and brown immigrants in this country is any indication, attack on those who appear as different will increase as elected officials repeat the mantra, "There isn't enough." But there is enough. When you deny CEOs their massive cuts, many black and brown immigrants are fleeing this exact climate disaster, robbing them of home, food, and health. The climate emergency is already here. Even in the U.S., and though some of us may be claimed by climate apartheid and homicidal bigotry before others, all folks, regardless of race, gender, or class, will eventually be claimed by this disaster. We are not a resilient species. These are scientists making these claims, not a bunch of scheming lefties. I attended the climate rally Friday. I was impressed by hundreds in attendance, and 15 youth especially, who surrendered themselves for arrest. Though I am watching closely how race, class, and gender solidarity is carried forward, I support the local Green New Deal and their tactics. I look forward to council passing the climate emergency resolution as written by Sunrise and doing all I can to ensure that race, class, and gender considerations is a core planning concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley McDermott?
Good evening, mayor and council. Sorry, I have a really bad cold. My name is Ashley McDermott. I'm the hub coordinator for Sunrise Movement Asheville. I'm also here to speak and clarify around next steps in the climate emergency resolution and where we are in the process so that the public is aware. The resolution added to the agenda this evening was not Sunrise Asheville's version nor endorsed by us, and did not include our asks in the be resolved section, which is where action should be clearly outlined. When we started this campaign in August, it came out of deep concerns with our current goals as a city and lack of concrete planning as accounting. Our current renewable energy resolution will only reduce our emissions by 1% by 2030, and that is simply not enough. We need a climate emergency resolution that will bring about actionable steps, that brings immediate public input, and puts us on a timeline that will impact the next fiscal budget for the city. We recognize that as a city, we're doing good things, but the fact is that this is the time that we must dig deep and recognize we have to shift and do much more immediately. This is an accountability tool that will help us reach that goal and ensure the public gets a seat at the table. There's an issue with transparency and public communication that we're feeling from the city. For example, during the drop-in sessions around the renewable resolution over the summer, we participated with the WNC Renewables Coalition to ensure that these were even publicized. About 24 hours beforehand, when nothing had been posted, we shared Facebook events to do what we could do to get the word out. The Climate Resilience Resource Guide implies a degree of class and privilege to be able to afford most of the suggested measures. This is simply not a true climate emergency preparedness plan and out-of-reach for vulnerable communities most susceptible to climate crisis impacts. We feel that the only way we can shift city planning processes that reflect our needs as a community is with an approach that's community-led. We need to update the tools we have, like the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, which is a dynamic document, and have an immediate community-wide public input session and perhaps start doing this regularly. These are all simple, yet fully doable asks that we seek to have support on in the final version of the climate emergency resolution that we hope to have passed in early January. I want to thank the city manager for your comment earlier about striving to have a holistic approach to our planning process, and we agree wholeheartedly. We think having a collective conversation with city staff, department heads, not in silos, could be a path to do so, and to talk collectively about our planning processes to draw down emissions at emergency speed and look at areas beyond just energy efficiency. Talking holistically and collectively, I have a lot more to say, but all right. Thank you.
Joe Menicosi?
Did the, I missed the consent agenda. Did the consent agenda pass today? Item D. And I'm here because on item D, you passed a resolution to basically keep trucks off the street, and these are our laws, laws that currently exist to keep trucks off streets. These laws, the UDO. So we have laws that already say trucks shouldn't be on streets. We have notes that come from city staff that say that you have to have certain classifications. We have to have certain sidewalk clearance. That's all rules. These are a memo that was delivered to myself and also Reed Thompson. Since you've all voted on this project and denied the application because the street is residential, this is just in August, so we had this meeting in October of last year, so two Octobers ago. This is last week. There is a loading on the street. This is a blocked sidewalk last week. This is a blocked sidewalk in a Class VII vehicle in a Class I zone. You know, we have police officers that have to spend their time there. They don't write tickets to the property owner. They're breaking the law, but this is allowed. This is, again, another, just last week, and even today. So we have these rules. We have all the stuff in place, and we can push for climate change. We can do all these other things, but if we can't handle the basics of our government, if we can't put a foundation on our building, why talk about a solar panel? These are rules that we have in place that are not protecting an individual. I have, our city planning director concludes that it's not a residential street. We have a determination that represents a de facto interpretation of the rules. This has never been overturned. Yet, our staff adopts a comp plan, and in the process of going through a hearing, this is what was in the rules when I filed the application, and they converted the property, which is started here, from commercial to residential in the span of a month. This is an AICP-registered professional that has done this without notifying me while this was in process. This is called tampering with evidence. No one let me know that this happened, yet it was used against me, calling this a residential street. They also ignored the area comp plan, the subject plan, the neighborhood plan for Broadway in going from commercial to residential. All of these actions were done without a public process. It was brought before you and used as a weapon against us in the process. The state law says I can choose to use either the old rules or the new rules. I wasn't given that option before you, and yet we still have trucks on the street that aren't being enforced with laws on the book that aren't being enforced. These are the rules of our community, and they're not being enforced. I also want to thank Jed for what he had to say. That takes a lot of courage as a firefighter to get before you all and say that. So I just want to second his emotion.
So Joe, unless there's three people who want to give you their time, I can't extend your time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The next person signed up to speak is Vicki Meath. I think we're just gonna look at Verta Vista for all eternity.
So I'm Vicki Meath. I'm with Just Economics, and I want to say that there's been a lot of talk about transit tonight, and I appreciate that conversation. I think we need to advance transit. You should note that I'm asking you to increase and improve transit. We have not yet funded the first year of the Transit Master Plan, and I came here tonight because I felt like the agenda for tonight wasn't really transparent, and I thought that in the manager's report, we were talking about priorities, that we were gonna talk about transit and the numbers, because when we, in October, following 20 days of building a broad base of support on transit in 2020, we came to you, we asked you to do a budget amendment, and we got a response. Bullet point number two was that we would get some information about transit numbers in December. I want to thank Julie for bringing that up, but also say that we are trying to work with the city. Our campaign is called Better Buses Together, and not giving us those numbers is not a good show of like how we partner with community members. And so, I'm disappointed that we didn't have those numbers tonight, that we didn't have the opportunity to talk about that, and I'm asking you to continue to follow up on that, and I am asking you to bring a budget amendment to extend the evening service hours that were outlined in the first year of the Transit Master Plan as a budget amendment in January. And I'm asking staff to work with us, because we deserve, as community members, as bus riders, as people who are advocating for our neighbors who are bus riders, to have the information that we were told that we would be given. Thank you so much. I hope you will pass a budget amendment in January.
The last person signed up to speak is Reed Thompson. Is this, is it a video that, I just need help, okay.
My name is Reed Thompson. I absolutely hate it that I'm here. I don't know how many times somebody has to point out the obvious, and I'm inviting every single one of you, Brad, that includes you, Deborah, that includes you.
Reed, please focus your comments on us.
Please let me speak. I've been arrested for standing on a sidewalk in front of my house, but trucks can come, and they can park there, and they can wake me up out of my bed. Kathy Ball. She said, no, I'm addressing Kathy Ball because she lied to me in this very room, Esther.
Okay, okay. I asked that you just direct your comments to the council.
Okay, Kathy Ball lied to me in this very room when she told me we were gonna address this. this, when she said that these trucks weren't going to come, and when I called, the police come out and they threatened to arrest me. They basically, with trucks sitting in the street, like Kathy said, the police were going to be there for the trucks, they weren't there for the trucks. But within a couple of minutes, they were all there for me. But if I call the police about trucks parked on the sidewalk, they don't come. And I very much believe what your firefighter told you earlier tonight. You've got that problem through all of your departments, Deborah.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wants to talk about something that was not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name's Sandy Aldrich. I've already spoken, but I would just, as a reminder, today is International Human Rights Day, and if weather had been permitting, I would have marched, I think, and for us all to look at our community real closely and to, for us to fight for each other's rights as a community, with all the different diverse types of people we have in this city, including handicapped, there's a whole gamut. It's not just cookie cutter, you know, same type of people. So I would just, you know, I'm looking for the year 2020 to be a perfect vision for Asheville, for us to come together and take care of all these issues and do it in love. I have to say that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, we don't have a closed session. Anyone have any announcements before we close this out? Nope? All right, the meeting is adjourned.